Hello? Yes? I'm TV gal. Are you sound? I'm TV gal, so don't name it. I'm 117. You're the one who's on the radio. You're the one. What's the brand of TV now? It's a TV.
It's a TV.
Oh, okay. Now, it's on. It's on. It's on. Hello, I'm... Hi. It's sound lang. Funny, we're not listening. We're not listening to the sound. It's off, come. It's on, come. It's okay, no matter. Maybe.
The session is called to order. Please rise for the singing of the national anthem.
Bayang magiliw, pero saan silang anan? Alang ng puso sa diti mo'y buhay. Lupang hinirang, buyan ka ng magiliw. Sa manlulupi, kita pasisinil. Sa lalat at bundok, sa simoy at sa langitong paghahal. May hilang ang kula at awit sa paglayang nilawahan. Ang isap lang wataw at mo'y ka gumpay na raking pinil. Ang bitumin at haraw niya kailan, pangpali magiliw. Luban ang maraw ng war, aming pagsikna. Buoy ay labis sa dito. Aming ligaya napak may mahapi. Ang lamatay ng daring sayo.
Please remain standing for a minute of silent prayer. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members.
All call of members and all call representatives. Abaya, Abayon, Abelyanosa, Abu, Abueg, Asharon, Ako, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adiyong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Agliba Biliar, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Mantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Moxaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Momentado, Bagao, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Bazaga, Batawil, Batocabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Pelixiano, Belmonte Se Cristopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Vernos, Bertiz, Diazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Rosas, Bulut Pektang, Cagas, Calderon, Calixtroviano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Harry, Casila, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fred, Katanko, Ayetano, Celeste, Cerapica, Ceriles, Chaves, Chipeco, Ho, Hawanko, Codiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Josalan, Crisologo, Hua, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, De Pensor, Del Mar, Del Osario, Del Osomontalia, Nimaporu Abdullah, Nimaporu Mohamed, Duabit, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Hermita Buahin, Scudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ebardoni, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer, Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Periol, Lorendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Gwendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin, Oscar, Garin, Sharon, Casataya, Achalian, Heron, Go Ana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Oriol Yudong, Gonzalez Fernando, Goriseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Herrera, Di, Hopper, Alosjos, Abiem, Co, Congun, Labadlabad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lazatin, Leachon, Lee, Limcaichong, La Brigad, Lopez Benjar, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel Luis, Loyola, Magapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magadadatos Ojarto, Magadadatos Ahid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Meliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Naba, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Carlo, Nolasco, Nuñez Malanyaon, Oaminal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Paquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiwan, Panotes, Kapandayan, Pichai, Piwintel, Spineda, Plaza, Primissiya Sagabas, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rebilia, Robapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Saktalan, Segarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salón, Zambar, Sandoval, Santos Rechtel, Sanmiento Cesar, Sanmiento Edgar Mary, Sabelyano, Semah, Xiao, Silberio, Sinson, Son Sing Estrelita, Son Sing Horacio, Suarez, Sielbarado, Tanbunting, San Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Tebes, Tianco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Treñas, Tuqna, Tupas, Ti, Humali, Unavia, Una, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Beretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Jatira, Veloso, Vergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villarazas Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Biolago, Yap Arthur, Yap Melacio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora, Hamer Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate, Subir.
Madam Speaker, the roll call shows that 197 members responded to the call.
With 197 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve Journal Number 44 dated December 5, 2017. So moved, Madam Speaker.
Mr. An objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we now proceed and take up additional reference of business, and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications. So moved, Madam Speaker.
Mr. An objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading.
Reference of business, bills on first reading. House Bill 6744, Providing for Food Policy Framework, Representative Chavez.
To the Committee on Government Reorganization and the Special Committee on Food Security.
House Bill 6745, Supporting Farmer and Fisherfolk Entrepreneurial Development by Way of Restructuring and Threatening Local Government Programs, Representative Chavez.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 6746, Reapportioning the Composition of First Legislative Districts and Seguriam Panglusod Seats of the Seat of Kalokan, Representative Malapitan.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 6747, Amending the Philippine Mechanical Engineering AKOP 1998, Representative Campos.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill Number 6748, 6749, 6750, Creating Certain Barangays and Tasmarinas Committee, Representative Bazaga.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 6751, Creating an Additional Branch of the RDC in the Third DC of San Guaga del Norte, Representative Amatong.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 6752, Establishing a National Program for the Kakao Industry, Representative Tan Angelina.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
Resolution, South Solution 1503, Calling on the House Committee on Human Rights to Condemn and Investigate the Cases of EJ Case on August 28, 2017, Representatives Rosas, Jesus, Sarate, several others.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1504, Directing the Committee on National Defense and Security to Inquire the Conduct of US-Philippine Counterterrorism Drills, Representatives Jesus, Rosas, and several others.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1505, Directing proper House Committee to Inquire the Apparent Corruption and Irregularities in the Imposition, Collection, and Distribution of Taxes and Peace on the Quarrying Operations of the Province of Nueva Ecija, Representative Vargas, Biolago, and Tebes.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1506, Urging the Committee on Human Rights to Investigate the Reported Food Blockade imposed by the Military in a Lumad Evacuation Camp, Representative Bilago.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1507, Recognizing the ASEAN-backed Philippines Setted by Presidential Advisor Entrepreneurial Chairman Joey Concepcion, Representative Yap Arthur, Panganiwan, and Biron.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1508, Strongly urging the DSIS to Immediately waive incurred penalties of loans obtained by public school teachers, Representative Salo.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
Messages from the Senate, Message dated November 29, Informing the House and Senate Even Date, Passed with Amendment, House Bill Number 6215.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated December 4, Informing the House and Senate Even Date, Designated Senator Vicente Ciso II as Additional Confidant to the Bi-Canal Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill Number 6215.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communications, Letter dated October 10 of Catalino, Escoy Officer in Charge, DILG.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Report on Fund Utilization and Status of Program Projects for the Quarter ended September 30 of the Municipality Plupao, Province of Nueva Ecija.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Committee Report Support Number 503 and House Bill Number 6306.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 504 and House Joint Resolution Number 18.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 505 and House Bill Number 6764.
To the Committee on Rules.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, under the business for the day, I move that we take up Joint Resolution Number 18, and request the Secretary General to read the title of the resolution.
Mr. An objection? Hearing none, motion is approved. The Secretary General is so directed.
House Joint Resolution Number 18, Joint Resolution Authorizing the Increase in Base Pay of Military and Uniform Personnel in the Government and for Other Purposes.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriations, Representative Nograles. To sponsor the measure.
Mr. An objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. The Honorable Carlo Nograles, Chairman of the Appropriations Committee, is hereby recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation and debates. So moved, Madam Speaker.
Hearing none, the motion is approved. The period of interpolation and debate is hereby opened.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. It's my honor as Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriations to sponsor House Joint Resolution Number 18, or the Joint Resolution Authorizing the Increase in Base Pay of Military and Uniform Personnel in the Government and for Other Purposes. I'd like to add, Madam Speaker, that this resolution is being authored by no other than the House Speaker, Pantalyon Alvarez, the Majority Leader, Rodolfo Fariñas, joined by the Minority Leader, Danilo Suarez, and this humble representation. I have a prepared sponsorship speech, Madam Speaker, but for the interest of time, because I know that there's still so much that we need to take up today before we go on a Christmas break next week, may I just ask that my sponsorship speech be inserted into the records, Madam Speaker?
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we insert into the records the sponsorship speech of the sponsor of this measure, and likewise, to consider the explanatory note as part of this sponsorship speech. I so moved, Madam Speaker.
Mr. An objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I manifest that Congressman Raoul Del Mar be included as co-author of the said measure. So moved, Madam Speaker.
Mr. An objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I further move that we include additional co-authors to House Joint Resolution Number 18, as contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules.
Mr. An objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from ACT Teachers Party List, the Honorable Antonio Tiño, to interpolate the measure.
The Honorable Antonio Tiño is recognized for his interpolation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon to the sponsors. Madam Speaker, the House Joint Resolution Number 18 is... Well, it's... First, it's important to note that it's a critical fact that we should pay attention to the Congress. Because of the joint resolution here, when the year 2018 came, it doubled the police, sundalo, and uniform personnel. So, from the salary of private police officer 1, and of the uniformed personnel, which is 14,000 pesos per month, by January 1, 2018, it will be 29,668 pesos per month. Is that right, Madam Speaker, the sponsor? Is that right, what I understand from the proposal? Double the salary?
Yes, Madam Speaker. As far as this House Joint Resolution, the monthly base pay of police officer 1, PO1, of the Philippine National Police, including the rank of private in the Armed Forces of the Philippines, including its equivalent ranks, at the BJP, Bureau of Fire Protection, Philippine Public Safety College, Philippine Coast Guard, and in Namriya, it's doubled from 14,834 to 29,668 pesos. That means it's increased 100% of its base pay since January 1, 2018, when it's approved. The increase in base pay in other ranks, it's not necessarily 100%, but it's calibrated per rank. And if we look at it, the average increase of different ranks is 58.7% increase. So the lowest level is only 100%. The different calibration is different. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the clarification. So 100% for the lower ranks, particularly private and PO1, and the average of 58% for the higher ranks. Madam Speaker, I want to point out that it's unprecedented the fact that this is a compromise of the government on its employees, whether they are uniformed or civilian. Because from 1989, the first amendment of the Salary Standardization Law, for one thing, the new thing here is, in one... in one thing, it's just one thing, it's doubled the salary, as we said, of PO1 and of private. Since 1989, until the SSL 1 that was mentioned, until, I think it was 1996 or 1997, no, 1994, the SSL 2, in the midst of President Ramos. Then, what's next? Executive Order 201, in the midst of President Aquino, always, whenever there is salary increase, always four tranches is given. So, four years of implementation, so if there is any increase, whether it's big or small, it's four gives. Usually, the reason is because it's not that big, because the budget of the government, the cost of the government. But, in fact, it's two tranches. But, the biggest increase, the 100% increase, is right away. So, from 14,000 to 29,000, by January 2018. It's just a few weeks. And, is that right, there is a second tranche? For the increase, when the higher ranks... Why is that? Why is... the increase is higher? It's not like when the... To be honest, I'll expand it. Can I clarify? For the record, what is rational about such a unprecedented, change in the salary of the government, particularly military, police, and other uniformed?
I see, Madam Speaker, that our administration has a very large role in our military and other uniformed personnel in ensuring our security internally and externally. So, I see our administration has a very high risk because of our national security, internal security, and security against external threats. I see our administration has changed to give us attention to the long-standing hindering of our military and other uniformed personnel that is increasing their salary nationwide to boost their morale and to show our appreciation for the critical role of our military and other uniformed personnel in maintaining our national security and peace and order, Madam Speaker.
So, the reasons for the sponsor, Madam Speaker, is firstly, to show appreciation to the state. Showing appreciation, the recognition of sacrifice and service of the uniformed personnel. Secondly, to boost morale. That's the reason.
Yes, Madam Speaker. Especially now, we see that in this current situation, our world is changed because we are really threatened by different forces internationally. There is a threat of terrorism, and we are victims of it. Especially because of this situation. What happened in Marawi, what happened in other parts of Mindanao, what happened in Davos City, what happened even in Visayas, where there were terrorist attacks, there was rebellion and rebellious attacks, and the military and our PNP, our police force, are solving all of these problems that they are successful in eliminating these threats, both the threats on terrorism and the threats of rebellion. And because our military and PNP have a more large role in providing security to our country, this is why we see our administration have changed to give us such a type of compensation so that we can ensure that our military and other uniformed personnel will have a strong inner protection against all of these threats, Madam Speaker.
Well, Madam Speaker, I wonder, maybe, the first question of the government employees who are not uniformed, the civilian bureaucracy, after approval of the Committee on Appropriations in a week, it's just the question. It's a question that has arrived to us directly, directly sent or sent through social media and other ways. This is a question of the civilian employees of the government, including ordinary utility workers and clerks, of course, the public school teacher, who is of course in the sector of health, who is responsible for our party list, the government health workers, the professionals in... uh, 'yung mga government health workers natin, um, 'yung mga professionals in the government service, sibilyan professionals, katulad ng mga government lawyers, uh, government uh, social workers, uh, guidance counselors, uh, at iba pa, no? Uh, mga inhinyero sa DPWH and so on and so forth, accountants and so on. So ang tanong po nila ay, uh, bakit unipormado lang? Paano naman daw 'yung sibilyan bureaucracy? Ano po ang paliwanag ng sponsor dito? No, 'yan ang number one question.
Well, Madam Speaker, um, darating at darating rin po tayo dyan. Kaya nga po, napakaimportante na lalong uh, paluguiin natin ang ating ekonomiya, uh, lalong uh, uh, palakihin ang uh, ang revenues na kinokolekta ng ating gobyerno para po sa ganong paraan, uh, maari rin po nating bigyan ng additional compensation ang ating mga kawanin ng gobyerno na nandun naman sa sibilyan sektor. Siyempre, naintindihan po natin na itong pagbibigay natin ng karagdagang sweldo eh, para po sa ating military and other uniform personnel. Pero siyempre, uh, naintindihan rin po ng ating administrasyon na pati na rin 'yung sa sibilyan um, sektor, ang mga kawanin natin ng mga sibilyan, kawanin ng gobyerno ng mga sibilyan, eh, kailangan rin po natin bigyan ng karagdagang compensation. So, Madam Speaker, um, darating rin po tayo dyan, uh, but obviously, it all depends din po dun sa ating budget. Kaya nga po, um, magandang uh, nakikita natin na bawat taon tumataas po 'yung budget natin, ito'y dahil nga rin po, dala ng paglagun ang ating ekonomiya. So rest assured, Madam Speaker, that uh, we're all working hard, no, both the legislative branch and executive branch, uh, to give additional compensation or even benefits for all of our government employees.
Madam Speaker, so ang sagot po ng sponsor, darating tayo dyan, no? Pero obligasyon ko pong itanong, sa katunayan, Madam Speaker, bago tayo magsimula ng session, merong, merong uh, uh, empleyado ng House, no, isa sa mga LSB natin dito na lumapit sa akin at binanggit nga 'yung, "Sir, kumusta na 'yung sweldo na pinaglalaban niyo?" Ibig niya sabihin 'yung sweldo ng mga sibilyan na katulad nila, sa kaya, kaya po uh, pagpamanin niyo, Madam uh, Speaker, di po, siyempre, hindi po maaring magkasya dun sa darating at darating tayo dyan, kailangan po itanong, kailan po? No, so, sa konkreto, uh, kailan po ba at uh, may, may plano po ba at kailan? Uh, kung meron kailan, maaring makaasa ng substantial salary increase ang mga kawaning sibilyan ng gobyerno sa ilalim ng Duterte Administration?
Uh, well, ayoko naman pong pangunahan ang ehecutibo ukol dito, uh, tayo na rin, tayo rin naman po sa legislative branch, alam naman po natin, taon-taon tayong um, nag-aapprove ng budget. So gaya po nitong nangyari sa military and other uniform personnel, um, nangyari lang po ito for uh, when we crafted the 2018 budget. So ibig po sabihin, uh, Madam Speaker, we have to take it uh, one budget at a time. So taon-taon naman, dadaan naman 'yan sa Kongreso, kaya taon-taon, um, tingnan natin, no, kung ano pa ang pwede nating idagdag, ipabahagi, ano mga karagdagang mga benepisyo or kung kaya't karagdagang sweldo para sa mga kawanin natin sa gobyerno. Itong sa military and other uniform personnel, nangyari lang ito dahil dito sa 2018 budget. So, ganun nga po, Madam Speaker, let's take it one budget at a time.
Well, Madam Speaker, actually, 'yan nga ang isang uh, parang uh, dinaramdam ng mga kawaning sibilyan natin sa gobyerno. Kasi po, uh, kapag nananawagan sila ng uh, salary increase, ang, ang unang-unang sinasagot palagi ng DBM ay, "Naku, walang pera, no, masyadong malaki ang kailangan natin." No, pero ngayon, nagulat sila na sa isang iglap, no? Sabi ko nga, January 1, pagtugtog ng January 1, doble na ang sweldo ng isang seksyon ng burokrasya, ito 'yung uniform personnel, no? So parang ang, ang nakita nila, "Abay, may pera namam pala," no? Uh, Madam Speaker, for the record, magkano po ba ang kailangan para dito sa 2018 initial implementation and then eventually, for the full implementation by uh, 2019? Para malinaw po, so we have figures, magkano po ba 'yung total na kailangan at nakalaan na sa 2018 budget?
Uh, for 2018, Madam Speaker, kinakailangan, uh, kailangan po natin ng 62, sorry, 64.2 billion for 2018. Tapos sa 2019, uh, we just need to add another 4.15 billion pesos, uh, Madam Speaker.
So 64.2 billion sa 2018 and another 4 plus billion sa 2019. So total, uh, annually 68, almost 69 billion ito?
Yes.
So 'yun nga po, Madam Speaker, no, hindi biro, itong halaga na to, uh, 60, 64 billion. In fact, uh, hindi po ba 'yung, 'yung SSL para sa kabuo ang burokrasya, kasama dyan ang police at militar? In fact, 'yan ang halaga. Tama po ba?
Uh, Madam Speaker, para sa SSL, uh, we needed 225 billion, 225 billion na hinati natin sa apat na tranches.
Hmm, okay, 225, so actually divided by four tranches, uh, more or less, uh, less than 60 billion nga eh, diba?
Per, per tranche.
Per tranche.
Pero ang total is 225.
So kaya nga, tama po 'yung punto ko roughly, no, na actually, uh, bukod dun sa third tranche na ipatutupad sa 2018, which is more or less, batay sa figures niyo, roughly 60 billion 'yan, no? Actually, itong Joint Resolution Number 18 na ito, ganun ding kalaki, no? So in other words, uh, 'yung increase para sa militar at police ay kasin laki nung increase na bibigay para sa buong burokrasya, ang punto ko lang dito, Madam Speaker, 'yun nga. Kaya medyo uh, naintindihan natin 'yung, 'yung uh, posisyon ng maraming mga sibilyan employees ng gobyerno na, "Abay, ba't pagka 'yung panawagan namin, walang pera." Pero eto ngayon, katumbasta mismo nung uh, increase para sa buong burokrasya 'yung ibibigay para sa isang, sa unipa, unipormadong uh, sektor ng gobyerno. So 'yun po 'yung isang punto. Tapos matanong ko rin po, uh, fully funded na po ba sa 2018 na budget, 'yung uh, 64.2 billion na kailangan? Kasi nung sa committee level po, wala pang kalinawan, parang 43 or so billion pa lang 'yung tiyak, no? Pero alam ko, sabi niyo, sa Baycom daw, baka hanapan na 'yan. Just for the record, na, na firme na po ba, fully funded na po ba itong uh, uh, first tranche of this joint res, proposed Joint Resolution Number 18?
Opo, uh, kung masusunod po 'yung magiging um, decision namin sa Baycom, so far, uh, hindi pa naman tapos 'yung Baycom.
Di pa tapos.
Di pa tapos, na sa proseso pa rin kami ng Baycom. At uh, pero um, so far, um, nahanapan na po natin ang paraan ito. So kung masusunod, 'yung uh, desi, decision ng Baycom at ilaratify ng both Houses of Congress, then fully funded na po siya.
Okay, so I, I suppose, no, magbibigay kayo ng assurance that it will be fully funded. Ito po ang isang tanong ko, um, ma, ma, magaguarantihan niyo ba na sa paghanap niyo ng pondo para ma, para ma-implement, uh, itong uh, pagdoble ng sweldo ng police at militar, ay hindi po ba, hindi babawasan ang anumang benepisyo na dapat ay mapunta sa, sa buong burokrasya ng gobyerno, including, I mean, the si, you know, sibilyan and military bureaucracy?
Opo.
Hindi ito mapabawasan?
Hindi po.
Hindi po ba totoo? Kasi eto na, 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 lumitaw po ito sa budget hearings natin na 'yung pondo para sa PEI, ah, sorry, PBB, Performance-Based Bonus, no? Uh, ngayong taon, ito ay, for 2017, nakuha ko po sa, sa kagalang-galang na charity ng appropriations ito, ngayong taon, 11 billion po, mahigit kumulang ang para sa PBB, pero sa 2018, 6 billion na lang po. Tapos ang paliwanag niyo dahil ni, pinag-iisipang muli, the DBM is rethinking the PBB, no? So hindi po ba ganun?
Uh, Madam Speaker, 'yung naging discussion po namin, uh, ng kagalang-galang na representante, uh, eh, iba po yun sa, may, may naging discussion tayo sa Performance-Based Bonus. Pero 'yung itong para sa additional na kinakailangan natin para pondohan 'yung military and other uniform personnel increase ng base pay. Hiwalay na issue po ito.
Naintindihan natin 'yan.
Kasi kukunin, hin, kukunin po natin, hindi po 'yung manggagaling dun sa Performance-Based Bonus, kung 'yun ang pinupunto. Kasi itong discussion natin, kunaalala po, Madam Speaker, ng ating kagalang-galang na representante ng at teachers, ang discussion po namin noon, uh, on the Performance-Based Bonus, uh, hin, hindi po yun ang magiging source
Okay.
nung kinakailangan na pondo para dito sa base salary increase.
Okay, uh, understood. Siyempre, mahirap naman magpinpoint ng eksakta sources, ha? Ang paboritong term nga ng DBM at uh, DOF dyan, all these funds are fungible, diba? Kung saan sa, hindi mo matutukoy kung saan galing ang uh, ang anumang pondo. Pero hindi po ba totoo pa rin na for 2017, sa GAA ng 2017, mahigit kumulang 11 billion ang nakalaan para sa PBB, pero sa 2018, magiging 6 billion na lang ito, tama po ba?
Uh, Madam Speaker, dito po sa GAB, 'yung GAAP na inapprove natin sa House of Representatives under sa Miscellaneous Personnel Benefits Fund, 'yung Performance-Based Bonus po na inaprobahan po natin ay naghalaga ng 11.625 billion. So same as
Uh, and for the record, 2018, uh, 2017, ngayon po, magkano po 'yung uh, fund for uh, PBB?
Uh, we'll, we'll look for the, I'll, I'll, I'll respond after we
Ah, yes, so balikan na lang po natin, para, para malinaw lang po. Okay, uh, so anyway, ang, ang punto po natin na, 'yun na nga, no, uh, 'yung hinaying ng mga sibilyan employees na wala daw pera, kaya hindi kayo mabigyan ng increase, pero 'yung sa kasabihan nga, pagayaw, maraming dahilan, pero pagusto, uh, paano ngayon? Pagusto, pwedeng pwede, diba? Kayang kaya, okay, something like that. Uh, ngayon, uh, uh, Madam Speaker, uh, sa Committee on Appropriations Hearing, nang tinanong ko po 'yung taga DBM, kung ano po ang maasahan ng sibilyan bureaucracy in terms of salary increase, uh, sa ilalim ng Duterte Administration, ang sinabi po, well, ipatutupad fully 'yung Executive Order 201, meaning to say, 'yung third tranche sa 2018, tapos 'yung fourth tranche, fourth and last tranche sa 2019. No, so ito 'yung, as far as the ranking file is concerned, maliit po 'yan eh, kasi parang 500 a month, no? Para sa mga salary grades one to more or less salary grade 11. Uh, tapos, ang sinabi po, particular ni Assistant Secretary Chuan ng DBM, after 2018 daw, pwede namang pong pag-aralan na uli ng DBM, kung, kung, kung nararapat ba na mag-implementa naman ng bagong round ng sa, ng uh, salary increase para sa sibilyan bureaucracy, uh, nananatili po bang ganito pa rin ang uh, stand ng DBM?
Uh, Madam Speaker, sa kasalukuyan, uh, pinag-aaralan na nga, pero kailangan natin maintindihan na ang gusto ng DBM, uh, sa ngayon, sa ngayon, ay uh, tapusin natin 'yung last tranche ng 2019. Uh, kung meron man mga, um, pwede nating gawin mga other sets of increases, we could already, uh, perhaps talk about it and maybe even sa implementation after the last tranche ng, uh, last tranche ng Executive Order Number 201. So that would be 2020. But uh, maari ang ibig sabihin po nung DBM, nung sinagot niya 'yung tanong ng ating kagalang-galang na representante, Madam Speaker, is ngayon pa lamang, is pinag-aaralan na nga nila. Pero siyempre, um, you know, as I said, ang budget naman, we do it every year. Kaya nga po, um, 'yung budgeting kasi, alam niyo, uh, it's based on assumptions. May mga ina-assume po tayong mga revenues that will be generated taon-taon. So do all of these are projections? Kaya ngayon nga po, pinag-aaralan na projecting ano maging revenue natin sa 2020, 2019, and then 2020, and so on, para malaman rin kung magkano 'yung maging fiscal space natin. So all of these things are taken into account pag pinag-usapan at pinag-aaralan 'yung mga increase in compensation.
Okay, so uh, pag-aaralan, whether ngayon na or sa, after 2019, basta pag-aaralan, ang malinaw so far, ang kategorikal na rinig po natin sa, para sa mga kawaning sibilyan, including 'yung mga House uh, employees natin, ay, uh, well, hanggang 2019 ang maasahan lang 'yung fourth tranche ng Executive Order 201, at this point, mukhang ganun ang malinaw. Speaking of pag-aaral, Madam Speaker, no, 'yun nga ang tanong ko eh, nakabata iba sa pag-aaral, itong uh, uh, salary schedule na naka-proposed sa Exec, sa House Joint Resolution Number 18, no? Uh, 'yung pag-doble, ilabaw, ng Private PO One at 'yung pagtaas ng ibang mga rango, is that based on any particular study? Or uh, or, usapin lang ba't na sinabi ni Pangulo nung uh, campaign period, do-doble niyang sweldo, so ngayon, eto na, dinoble na 'yung sweldo. Tapos siyempre, dahil dinoble mo 'yung sweldo nung nasa baba, kailangan i-adjust mo rin 'yung mas mga mataas na rango, no? So, 'yun ang tanong ko po, meron bang scientific study na pinagbatayan sa mga rates or salary schedule na nandito?
Yes, uh, yes, Madam Speaker, tiningnan po 'yung mga uh, current, uh, 'yung ibang, iba't ibang ranks, tapos tiningnan 'yung magkano 'yung naging base salary sa kasalukuyan, tapos tiningnan din po 'yung, kumbaga, parang equivalent niya sa sibilyan. So based on that uh, comparison, uh, that's when they came up with a formula, nung increases, uh, tapos 'yung napag-decisionan, 'yung lowest rank, magiging doble, tapos tiningnan 'yung, kinalibrate na po, 'yung increases per rank from the lowest all the way up to the highest, but making sure na 'yung highest hindi, hindi rin tatanggap ng mas malaki sa parang equivalent niya dun sa sibilyan, sibilyan uh, personnel.
Okay, oh, well, it's good, Madam Speaker, na binanggit ng Okay, oh, well, it's good, Madam Speaker, na binanggit ng sponsor 'yung equivalent sa civilian. Kasi nga ito 'yung isang concern ko, rin ang concern ko rin, ano? Ah, pinag-aralan ba 'yung, ah, well, effects ng distortion? No? Pag-iyahambing natin 'yung sweldo ng militar at pulis at saka ng civilian, isa 'yun. Tapos 'yung distortion din, ah, at saka 'yung long-term effect on the job market as a whole, no? Sabihin 'yung long, long-term effects nito, kasi halimbawa po, to be, to be concrete, ang pinapap, pinakamababang sweldo po dito na itataas actually hindi sa P O one, kundi sa candidate soldier, no? So, by candidate, so, sino po ba itong candidate soldier? Ah, ito ba kadete ng P M A, ano, ano po ba'to? Please clarify. O mga nag-aapply na private, 'yan ba 'yun? Pa'no ba 'yan?
Madam Speaker, trainee pa po 'yun?
Trainee. Trainee, so...
They need six months at least as a trainee or as a cadet before they can become a private.
Trainee bago maging private. Ang candidate soldier po, ang magiging starting salary will be, ah, eighteen thousand five hundred eighty-seven by January one, twenty eighteen. Alam niyo po, ano ang katumbas niyan? Sa civilian. Sa civilian po, more or less salary grade ten. No, cashier one, agrarian reform program technologist one is the closest, eighteen thousand seven hundred eighteen. Tapos hindi malayo, the next closest would already be salary grade eleven, which is your teacher one, your registrar one, your guidance counselor one, that is in, ah, in Dep Ed, top first nurse one, no, sa health sector, public health sector, tapos, ah, private secretary, secretary sa bureaucracy, no? Um, so, 'yun pa lang, hindi po ba, Madam Speaker, ginong sponsor, parang may, may, meron ng distortion dun, kasi 'yung isa, trainee, trainee. No, in terms of qualifications, you're talking about professionals, teacher, nurse, guidance counselor, let me add. Ang guidance counselor po, guidance counselor one, para maging lisensyadong guidance counselor ka, you need not just a four-year course, you need an M A, Master of Arts, aside from having to pass the licensure examination, no? Ngayon, ganyan, sa proposal niyo po, ay itutumbas halos, no, ang sweldo ng M A graduate sa isang trainee na sundalo, na hindi pa nga qualified na maging private, trainee pa lamang. So, hindi po ba, Madam Speaker, may, may distortion? Let me go on. Um, 'yung pong, ah, halimbawa, um, eto, let's see, ah, as, ah, Assistant Principal One, Assistant Professor Three. No, ang sweldo po niyan, or Executive Assistant Two, Supervising Procurement Officer, salary grade seventeen, thirty-four thousand seven hundred eighty-one a month, ang katumbas po niyan, Master Sergeant or Senior Police Officer One, no? Um, I can go on. Master, ah, let's see, Associate Professor One. So, Associate Professor po, PhD, no, kailangan mo ng PhD para maging Associate Professor One ka sa State University or College. Master Teacher Two, Master Teacher Two na 'yan, hindi lang Master Teacher One. Para sa maraming guro, towards the end of their career na 'yan. No, after a, you know, serving in our public school system for maybe twenty or thirty years, no? Sweldo niyan, forty-two thousand ninety-nine, salary grade nineteen. Ang equivalent po sa proposal niyo, First Lieutenant or Inspector, eh, ang First Lieutenant po, after ilang taon lang 'yan na serbisyo, Second Lieutenant, kakagraduate mo pa lang sa P M A, First Lieutenant, maybe after one or two years. So, 'yun po 'yung isang concern natin. I could go on with the examples, no, pataas po tayo ng pataas. 'Yun po 'yung concern natin, 'yung distortion. Sabi niyo kanina, ah, moral, definitely, I, of course, do-doble ng sweldo ng pulis at militar, ataas ang moral ng mga ito, siyempre naman, di ba? At, and we, we do not begrudge them that, no? Maganda 'yan, okay, matutuwa tayo o matutuwa tayo para sa kanila at sa kanilang mga pamilya. Kaya lang po, as I said, sa social media, may mga nagpaabot, mga teacher, eto nga, mga master teacher, sinasabi nila, "I've been in government service for twenty, thirty years." No, ni, hindi ko matikman itong twenty-nine thousand, thirty thousand, so, kung mataas ang moral ng mga unipormado, eh, ngayon naman, demoralized. 'Yung nasa civilian, Madam Speaker, Mister, Mister Sponsor, so 'yun po ang isang concern natin, parang may, may injustice po. No, kung iiwanan natin, di po natin sinasabi huwag natin itaas 'yung sweldo ng mga unipormado, pero 'yung concern natin dito, 'yung iiwanan natin, 'yung civilian bureaucracy. So, 'yun po 'yung, 'yung concern natin, one, mark, you know, if we're talking in market terms, market distortion, no? Abay, ngayon, kunyari, ako, gumraduate ng high school, mag-isip na ako ng career path ko, magkukuha pa ba ako ng education? No, mag-aapply ako bilang teacher, sweldo ko, twenty thousand a month, o, aba, mag-private na lang ako, hindi, hindi ko na kailangan mag-college, tapos, ah, twenty-nine thousand a month kaagad. So, 'yun, 'yun, 'yun 'yung isa. Pangalawa, 'yun ngang demoralization on the part of the civilian bureaucracy. No, may pagtingin na, yes, mahalaga 'yung ginagawa ng pulis at militar, hindi ba mahalaga 'yung ginagawa ng teacher, ng nurse, ng mga utility worker, ng mga clerk, ng mga accountant, engineer, and so on and so forth, Madam Speaker, Mister Chair, pa'no naman po 'yun?
Well, Madam Speaker, legally, legally speaking, meron kasing reasonable, um, classification dito. Because, again, gaya ng binabanggit ng, um, ating kagalang-galang na representante ng ACT Teachers, um, madidistinguish mo agad, no, 'yung men, military, and other uniform personnel sa civilian component. So, meron po tayong reasonable classification between those two, sabihin natin, groups or sectors. Ngayon, um, adding to this reasonable classification is, 'yun na nga, sa market distortion, hindi rin kasi natin pwede sabihin na equivalent or pwede mag-apply ang market distortion dito. Dahil nga po, 'yung sa civilian component, meron din po 'yan sila mga private counterparts. So, sabihin natin, teacher, ang teacher pwedeng sa gobyerno 'yan or pwede sa private school 'yan. Pagdating naman sa military and other uniform personnel, pulis, military, wala pong equivalent na private 'yan na sector. Isa lang po 'yan, government lang po 'yan. So, um, eto na nga po, ah, because meron tayong reasonable classification between the two sectors, then it can be treated differently. Pag-sinabi kasi natin na Philippine National Police Military, iba po kasi 'yung hazards ng kanilang trabaho. Ang hazard nila talagang, ah, every day that they are on the field, they are exposed to, ah, the dangers of their occupation, which means danger to life and limb. So, um, maari po talaga nating mahiwalay or maklasify as a separate class itong military and other uniform personnel. So, I don't believe market distortion is applicable in this case. At, ah, bagamat, pwede tayong, ah, sumubok na i-compare 'yung iba't ibang rango ng military pati mga Philippine National Police dun sa, kumbaga counterpart niya sa civilian component, eh, hindi po 'yan apples-to-apples, no? Ang, ah, pagtugma dyan, dahil nga po, ibang sektor 'yung talagang sa civilian, ibang sektor din po 'yung sa military and other uniform personnel. Pwedeng gawing some sort of basis, pero hindi talaga 'yan pwedeng itugma na mag-one-to-one, ah, correspondence or comparison ka, ah, in, sa isang bahagi, kumpara dun sa kabilang panig or clasifikasyon.
Well, Ma, Madam Speaker, sa totoo lang, ah, sa palagay ko, actually, with the House Joint Resolution Number Eighteen, mukhang, ah, inaabanduna na ng Duterte Administration, ng D B M, ng sponsor, 'yung, um, certain, ah, core principles of the Salary Standardization Law, no? Ah, hindi ko po pinagtatanggol ang Salary Standardization Law, ina-articulate ko lang 'yung pagkakaintindi ko dun sa rationale niya. At dito, more or less, ah, pinagbabatayan nung standardization ay, ay mga objective criteria. For example, qualifications, no, academic qualifications or other qualifications, skills, ah, and so on and so forth. So, mga objective criteria po 'yan. Kaya po, more or less, in fact, ah, more or less, pinapantay 'yung ano eh, in, in the most recent SSL, hinabol 'yung sweldo ng pulis P O one sa teacher, kasi sabi nila, more or less, roughly equivalent in terms of, ah, professional qualifications ang mga ito, no? Ah, so, 'yung SSL, 'yung standardization niya nakabata sa objective, ah, criteria. Ngayon, ang, ang, kaya sinabi kong tinatalikuran na 'yan dahil 'yung binabanggit na criteria ni, ng kagalang-galang na sponsor, hindi 'yan objective, subjective eh, sabihin, well, kasi itong mga profisyon na 'to, they are, one, they are unique to, ah, you know, ah, they, ah, sumusuong sila araw-araw sa panganib, and so on and so forth, kaya kailangan pahalagahan natin ito. At pagpapahalaga natin, ay quantify through these, ah, salaries. Of course, pwede naman sa, you could also argue na, hindi, pag ganyan ang usapin, aba, 'yung, 'yung, ah, teacher ba, hindi ba mahalaga para sa lipuna na kanyang ginagawa? Sabi nga, sabi nga pa lang, magkakaroon ba tayo ng sundalo ng, ah, pulis kung walang teacher, 'yung mga nurse, 'yung mga doktor. Abay, kung, kung wala ang mga to, di, eh, you know, buhay, buhay, buhay at kalusugan ng, ng mamamayang Pilipino pinag-uusapan dito. So, mukhang isa pong, hindi po ba, ganun na, ginong sponsor, no, parang tinatalikuran na natin. As I said, hindi ko po pinagtatanggol ang SSL, pero, ah, and, in many ways, sa palagay ko, this can provide an opening, no, kung, kung, kung totally, tatalikuran na natin 'yung SSL, no? So, abay, kung ma-itataas po 'yan, abay, pwede rin nating itaas based on, ah, other than the current criteria ang sweldo ng iba pang mga kawanin ng gobyerno.
Madam Speaker, to give way to some important matters of collective privilege, I move to suspend the consideration of House, House Joint Resolution, Madam Speaker.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. The period of interpellation is hereby suspended. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, before we call the next interpolator, may we first greet the guests in the gallery of the Honorable Speaker Pantalon Alvarez. They are the boys and girls officials from the city of Manila, namely Carlo J. Manalo, Abby Adino Francisco, Lawrence Alibuyog, James Benedict Questa, Ray Silvestre Beñas, Joshua Edward Lasap, and Ferdinand L. Sanchez II.
Welcome to the youth from the city of Manila from the House of Representatives.
Also, may we further acknowledge the guests of the Honorable Henry O'Minal and Congressman Ben Canama. They are from the Governor Alfonso Ditan College in Tangob City, led by their Vice Presidents, Dr. Marisel Nueva, Mrs. Beliaflor Fernandez, Ms. Love Valiaron, and the rest of their delegation, namely Fritzian Florida, Nielle Enerio, Elaine Bandigan, Mariethes Alota, Herbert Magsayo, Eliseo Laurenton, Eileen Daguman, Engineer Erwin Lacpao, Jake N. Tangkogo, Baby Linmina, Jay Marakina, Je, Jevarney Caruana, Jennifer Tia, Romar Mangrino, Key J. Pondok, Margaret Ugnit, Mark Lester Flores, Esel Pabiliaran, Noriel Erap, Helen Manaloto, Zelmar Clam, Stephen J. Mandong, and Joseph Oniot.
To the guests of Congressman Muaminal and Canama, welcome to the House of Representatives.
May we also recognize, lastly, the guests of the Honorable Ann K. Hofer. They are Dr. Nick Caci Rubas, um, he is the Associate Teaching Professor from DePaul University in Chicago, Illinois, and Mr. Ralph Emerson Degolashon, um, he is a project manager of the Health Justice Philippines.
To the guests of Assistant Majority Leader Ann Hofer, welcome to the House of Representatives.
Madam Speaker, I move that we resume interpolation.
Madam Speaker, I move that we resume consideration of the House Joint Resolution Number Eighteen.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is, ah, granted. We resume with a period of interpolation.
To continue with the sponsorship of Madam Speaker, again, I move that we recognize the distinguished Chairman of the Committee on Appropriations, the Honorable Carlo Nogales.
Congressman Nogales is hereby recognized to resume with his sponsorship and interpolation.
To continue with the interpolation of Madam Speaker, again, I move that we recognize the Honorable Antonio Tinio.
The Honorable Tinio is recognized.
Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker. Ah, Madam Speaker, matanong ko lang po kung, ah, ah, ready na po 'yung datos na hiningi natin kanina, kahugnay sa P B B amount in the twenty-seventeen, ah, G A A.
Well, ah, Madam Speaker, ah, 'yung sa Performance-Based Bonus, in two thousand seventeen, the, ah, amount allocated was sixteen point six billion.
Alright, so sixteen point six billion for twenty seventeen, and then eleven billion for twenty eighteen. So, nabawasan po ng may gitkumulang limang billion.
Opo.
No?
Because, ah, Madam Speaker, if I may, ah, ang naging basis po nung, ah, reduction is, number one, ah, by the, by the name itself, Performance-Based Bonus kasi, is, you know, based on performance. Meaning to say, there are indicators, there are some, um, accomplishments, there, there's some criteria that have to be fulfilled before the Performance-Based Bonus is released. So, ang naging experience po natin sa Performance-Based Bonus in terms of utilization po, is that, ah, for example, sa two thousand seventeen, as of, um, August thirty-one, twenty seventeen, ang nagamit lang po sa Performance-Based Bonus was two point three billion pesos. Tapos, itong November thirty, two thousand seventeen, ang nagamit so far was only four point three billion out of the sixteen point six billion. Kaya, ah, ito po 'yung naging basis natin, ah, for reducing 'yung Performance-Based Bonus, kasi, ah, in terms of its, um, utilization rate, ah, hindi naman ganun kalaki ang kinakailangan na ulitin natin 'yung sixteen point six billion ng two thousand seventeen, gawa ng, ang utilization, hindi naman ganun kalaki. Kaya, minabuti na lang po natin na bawasan ito ng two thousand eighteen para naman po, ah, mapunta sa ibang programa pa na mas mabilis ang utilization. But, ah, based on our experience, um, hindi rin naman... But based on our experience, um hindi rin naman 'yung 11 billion is sapat na po 'yun for 2018 in terms of utilization of performance-based bonus, Madam Speaker.
Well, una, 'yung utilization, 'yung relatively low utilization for 2017 for the current year is because maraming mga ahensya, hindi pa tapos 'yung proseso, I cite DEPED. In fact, ah, 'yung DEPED mukhang 2018 pa ibibigay 'yung para sa- para sa taong ito. So in other words, kaya- kaya mababa pa 'yan. Pangalawa, ah and we established this during the budget deliberations, ah in fact, pinaliit na ng BBM 'yung ah amount for PBB. Sabi po sa Executive Order 201, dapat po by- by, if not this year, next year, one month salary minimum to two month salary maximum na ang PBB. That's what it states in Executive Order 201. And yet, in the guidelines released by BBM, ginawa na lang po nilang 50% to 65% 'yung rates, no? So, ni-reduce 'yung PBB, no? So, kaya po, this is my point, no? In fact, sa, this is why I make the conclusion that ah part of the funding for the Joint, House Joint Resolution Number 18, 'yung 63 billion na 'yan, will actually come from this reduction in the PBB of all civilian personnel, no? Whether sabi mo, hindi naman diretsyo 'yan and so on and so forth, that is the fact, no? May mas malaking benepisyo na sinasabi ang batas, hindi ito binigay, tapos papalitin pa nga sa 2018. No, sa, I- I- I gusto kong ilagay sa record 'yun, Madam Speaker. Um, ngayon, Madam Speaker, ah, I think na- naipahiag ko na ang mga mahahalagang punto kaugnay nito, no? Na um sa isang banda, no, natutuwa kayo, ah, ay, hindi pa pala, may, bago ako mag-wind up, Madam Speaker, may isang mahalagang punto pa pala akong naisip, no? Na siguro kailangan din nating ah banggitin ang mas malawak na konteksto ah kung saan pinatutupad or na isipatupad ang- ang House Joint Resolution Number 18 o ang pagdodoble ng sweldo ng pulis at militar. No, hindi po ordinaryo ang panahon natin ngayon sa ilalim ng Duterte Administration. Bakit ko po nasabing di-ordinaryo? Una, nasa ilalim ng martial law ang isang malaking bahagi ng Pilipinas, ang buong Mindanao nananatili pa sa martial law 'yan. Ah tapos, may ah may banta si Pangulong Duterte na nais pa nga niya ilagay ang buong Pilipinas sa ilalim ng martial law. Tapos labas sa bantang 'yan, nagbabanggit din siya na hindi na lang martial law, revolutionary government. No, ang ah ang gusto na niya, ibig sabihin, isangtabi na natin ang konstitusyon at ah sa katunayan, kasama dyan 'yung pagsasatabi sa kongreso, ang lahat ng kapangyarihan, executive and legislative mapupunta sa presidente, no? Ah, of course, lately, sinabi ni Pangulong Duterte, lalo pa at pumalpak 'yung mga supposedly nationwide rallies na magpapakita daw sana ng malawak na suporta para sa revolutionary government pero ah na- pumalpak po, no? Nakita naman natin, halos walang turnout ang mga ito, so inatras po. No, ang punto, Madam Speaker, ah banggitin ko pa, 'yung karagdagang konteksto pag- pag ah terminate sa peace talks through Presidential Proclamation Number 360. Tapos, kamakailan lang 'yung bagong proclamation declaring the CPP, NPA as ah terrorist organizations. Ibig po sabihin ito, ah as far as the Duterte Administration is concerned, the political solution, the peace process is already out of the question, no? Ah mukhang ang magiging approach, dahil diniklarang terrorista, ang magiging approach is a purely military solution. Dagdag na konteksto pa, ibabalik o binalik na ang ah drug war sa Philippine National Police. No, so, so kung nung panahon na inilipat sa pideya, nakita natin ang pagtigil nung ah maramihang tokhang at extrajudicial killing ng mga ordinaryong ah drug users and small-time pushers, ah ay maaring babalik na'to, no? Dahil ah ibabalik na muli sa PNP ang lead role sa drug war. Ang punto ko po, na ito 'yung isang partikularidad ng Duterte Administration, 'yung napakahalagang papel para sa kanyang administration ng pulis at ng militar. Pansin naman natin si Pangulong Duterte, halos linggo-linggo umiikot sa mga kampo ng- ng militar, no? At ah nagtatalumpati ro'n, no? So, ah malinaw 'yung mahalagang papel ng militar at pulis sa kasalukuyang takbo ng Duterte Administration at sa mga pinapahiwatig na plano, whether it is a nationwide martial law or even revolutionary government. Naalam naman natin, hindi naman 'yan matutuloy kung walang suporta ng pulis at lalo na ng militar. No, kaya po, um, hindi po ba isang dahilan din, Madam Speaker, at ginoong sponsor, kung bakit, kung bakit ah agad-agarang ah pinapasa itong ah pagdodoble ng sweldo na nagtatangi lamang sa pulis at militar ay dahil ah gustong kunin ni Pangulong Duterte ang suporta ng pulis at militar para sa kanyang ah paghahari?
Well, una-una, sa lahat, Madam Speaker, gusto ko lang, nais ko lang klaruhin na wala naman sa administrasyon ito ang nagsasabi eh ah pro-revolutionary government po tayo. Wala naman tayong sinasabi na magre-revolutionary government po tayo. Kung meron mang ah nasabi na something similar to that, ito 'yung maaring nasabi na kung itong revolutionary or itong revolución eh mangyayari kung magkakaroon na nga ng malawakang panggulo dito sa ating bansa. But, you know, ah wala naman nagsasabi na ito'y ah magkakaroon ng revolutionary government. Yun po 'yung, siguro meron ibang mga sektor na nagsasabi niyan pero hindi po naman ah itong administrasyon na ito ay hindi naman ah nagsasabi na ah parang sinasabi niya na "you revolt against me." Hindi po, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense na ire-revolt mo 'yung sarini mo. So, ah nais ko lang pong iwanagin 'yan. 'Yung pagbibigay ng konteksto ah para sa akin, ah Madam Speaker, with all due respect sa ating kagalang-galan na representante ng act teachers, ah I don't, let's not take things out of context. Itong ah ginagawa ng administrasyong ito eh ito'y trabaho po ng kahit sino man. Ang administrasyon, ito po'y trabaho ng gobyerno. 'Yung lalaba- labanan ang terorismo, labanan ang rebilyon, ang paggamit ng martial law, pag ah kinakailangan kahit sinong administrasyon, ah ang nagpapatakbo ng gobyerno, ah ito po'y mga options na maaring gamitin ng gobyerno as tulad ng martial law, maaring gamitin ang gobyerno as self-defense niya. At 'yan naman po ay binibigay ng ating konstitusyon. Um, 'yung panlaban, 'yung- 'yung ah paglaban kontra sa terorismo at kontra sa rebilyon, trabaho po 'yan ng gobyerno. So, huwag po siguro natin masyadong basahin ito na nawawala na talaga tayo sa, we're taking it out of context. Wala pong ah ganyan klaseng um relasyon, no? Ah siguro, ah gaya ng sinabi ko, ah worldwide, no? Ah nararamdaman natin wherever we are in the world, wherever you are in the world, whether it's in Europe or America. Um, 'yung itong mga acts of terrorism eh naging widespread na po. And that's really the reason why, because of the increase in danger sa life and limb ng ating mga kapulisan at ng mga ating mga kasundaluhan, eh minabuti at dinesisyonan ng ating administrasyon na dagdagan nga po ang salary, ah base salary ng ating mga military and other uniform personnel.
Thank you for that, Madam Speaker. Um, well, ah una, isang reaction lang sa isang statement ng kagalang-galan na sponsor. As far as I know, ang narinig ko at I think public and on the record ito, 'yung option ng revolutionary government ay kay Pangulong Duterte mismo nanggaling 'yan. Ah pero ang- ang, etong tanong ko, no? Yamang meron na pong nakatabi, nakalaan na 64.2 billion pesos sa proposed 2018 budget. Magiging bukas po ba ang sponsor, no? Ah na bilang pagkilala sa pangangailangan, no? Sa kagipitan ng nakaraming mga kawanin ng gobyerno, lalo na 'yung mga rank and file, 'yung mga salary grade one, salary grade 11. Kasi po 'yung mga higher salary grades sa ilalim ng kasalukuyang ah salary standardization ay pinatutupad. Actually, very generous na 'yung kanilang mga increase, no? So bilang pagkilala sa katwiran nung panawagan na dagdagan pa ang- ang sweldo ng mga ordinaryong kawanin ng gobyerno, bilang pagkilalarin sa kahalagahan ng serbisyo na kanilang ibinibigay, no? Sa mamamayang Pilipino, no? So bukod sa sakripisyo at serbisyo ng mga sundalo, pulis, at iba pang unipormado, 'yung pagkilalarin sa serbisyo at sakripisyo ng mga public school teacher, nurse, doktor, lawyer, ah 'yung mga utility worker, clerk, accountant, at iba pa, lahat na nagpapatakbo po sa gobyerno, magiging bukas po ba ang ating sponsor kung 'yung 64 billion na 'yan sa halip na ibigay lahat para sa kagyat na pagdoble ng sweldo ng pulis at militar ay ilalaan natin para sa lahat ng government employees? In other words, pwede pong doblehin eh? Kung- kung ah 'yung 64 billion na 'yan ay ah ilalaan natin para sa buong bureaucracy, civilian and military, sa halip na 500 a month lang ang maasahan ng maraming mga government employees na increase, pwedeng mas malaki po. Lalo pa kung 'yung increase ay ibibigay natin dun sa rank and file. So maaring hindi na lang 500 a month, pwedeng maging ah 2,000 a month, 3,000 a month for the lower ranking employees, no? Ah at in fact, 'yan po ang ah, 'yan po ang alternative proposal namin, no? Ah, magiging bukas po ba ang sponsor sa ganong panukala? Alang-alang po sa interes ng lahat ng kawanin ng gobyerno.
Um, Madam Speaker, this is just to graciously remind our interpolator and re-chair that the one R allotted to every member for debate has just expired, Madam Speaker.
Yes, well, um, the Honorable Tinio, please wind up.
Yes, I- I had a question, so I would just like to wait for a reply.
Ah, I leave it to the discretion of Congress as a whole. Kasi, isalam po ako dito at ah gaya ng ginagawa natin para sa maaprubahan itong salary increase ah ng ating mga sundalo at mga kapulisan, ah kinailangan po natin magpumasa ng isang house, ah ng isang joint resolution. Ah kasama po dyan 'yung House pati 'yung Senate. Ah intindihin po natin na ito'y dumaan sa isang proseso kung saan, pati 'yung ekutibo, isinama natin dun sa kanilang pagcompute no magkano ba ang pag-increase, ah mabusising pag- pag-aaral kung ano 'yung kayang abutin at kayang gastusin ng gobyerno given our revenues at ang levels natin sa budget. So dumaan po 'yan sa proseso, kaya hindi po ah, gaya ng sinabi ko, um, ito po'y magiging isang desisyon na hindi- hindi ko gagawin na ako lang mag-isa kundi ito'y didesisyonan, didesisyonan po ng buong kongreso, ang House, ang Senate, at siyempre dapat kasama rin natin pag-coordinate dito ang ekutibo.
Madam Speaker, maraming salamat po. Ah tumayo po ako rito upang bigyang boses ang panawagan ng lahat ng mga kawanin ng gobyerno, militar at civilian, unipormado at civilian, no? At ang pinaglalaban po natin ay bigyan po ng disenting sweldo ang lahat ng kawanin ng gobyerno. May pondong na po, may 62 billion, no? Ang panawagan po natin ay sa halip na isang sektor lang ay bigyan po ng substantial increase ang lahat ng kawanin ng gobyerno, lalo na ang rank and file employees including our ah utility workers, clerks, public school teachers, nurses, at iba pa, no? At ang hamon po ngayon ay nasa kongreso na, sana po dinggin at ah suportahan ng mga kasamahan ko sa kongreso ang hinaiin ng ating, lahat ng ating mga kawanin ng gobyerno. Maraming salamat po, Madam Speaker, maraming salamat, ginoong sponsor.
Maraming salamat po, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of the House Joint Resolution Number 18.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up on second reading, House Bill Number 6707, contained in Committee Report 488. And for this purpose, please direct our Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The secretary jet, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 6707.
House Bill Number 6707, a knock extending for another 25 years the franchise granted to Ribbon Broadcasting Corporation under Republic Act Number 8084 entitled an act granting Ribbon Broadcasting Corporation a franchise to construct, maintain, and operate radio and other eh and television broadcasting stations within Luzon and other areas in the Philippines where frequencies and or channels are still available for radio and television broadcasting.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? Uh, hearing none. The motion is granted. The period of sponsorship of House Bill 6707 is hereby opened.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the distinguished Chairman of the Committee on Legislative Franchises, the Honorable Franz Alvarez to sponsor the measure.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. The Honorable Franz Alvarez is hereby recognized to sponsor the measure.
For this measure, Madam Speaker, I move that we consider the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted.
There being no objections, Madam Speaker, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion to close the period of sponsorship and debate is hereby granted.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 6707.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. Ayes have it. The um, House Bill 6707 is hereby approved on second reading.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up on second reading, House Bill Number 6708, contained in Committee Report 489. And for this purpose, kindly direct our Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. The Secretary General is so directed.
House Bill Number 6708, a knock extending for another 25 years the franchise granted to Advanced Media Broadcasting System Inc. under Republic Act Number 8061. Entitled a knock granting the Advanced Media Broadcasting System Inc. a franchise to construct, install, operate, and maintain radio and television broadcasting stations in the Philippines.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. The period for sponsorship and debate of House Bill 6708 is hereby opened.
Madam Speaker, again, to sponsor the measure, I move that we recognize the Honorable Franz Alvarez, Chairman of the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. The Honorable Franz Alvarez is hereby recognized to sponsor the measure.
For this measure, Madam Speaker, I also move that we consider the- For this measure, Madam Speaker, I also move that we consider the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted.
There being no interpolations, Madam Speaker, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. The period of amendments hereby opened.
Madam Speaker, there being no amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. The period of amendments is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 6708.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. All those in favor, please say aye. Those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. Rep, House Bill 6708 is hereby approved on second reading.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up House Resolution 1463, contained in Committee Report 481, and for this purpose, please direct our Secretary General to read the title of the resolution.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. The Secretary General is so directed.
House, House Resolution 1463. A resolution strongly urging His Excellency President Rodrigo Duterte to renew the policy which grants travel tax exemption to travelers departing from all international airports and seaports in Vindanau and Palawan to any destination in the Brunei, Darussalam, Indonesia, Malaysia, Philippines, East Asia growth area.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 1463.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. House Resolution 1463 is hereby adopted.
Madam Speaker, we are in receipt of the By-Cameran Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill Number 4863 and Senate Bill Number 1239 on granting the Chief of the Na- Philippine National Police and the Deputy Directors of the CIDG the authority to issue subpoenas. In accordance with the rules, I move that we ratify the said By-Cameran Conference Committee Report.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted.
Madam Speaker, I move for suspension.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up House Resolution Number 1418, and for this purpose, please direct our Secretary General to read the title of this resolution.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is so directed.
House Resolution 1418, a resolution requesting the Department of Tourism through the Tourism Infrastructure and Enterprise Zone Authority to allocate funds for the construction and maintenance of public restrooms along the eastern and western nautical highways of the Philippines.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor this resolution, ah, I move that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on, ah, Tourism, the Honorable Lucy Torres.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. The Honorable Lucy Torres is hereby recognized to sponsor the resolution.
Madam Speaker, ah, so as to introduce, ah, amendments from the committee, I move that we open a period of amendments.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. The period of amendments of said resolution is hereby opened.
This is to introduce the following committee amendments on House Resolution Number 1418. Number one, on the first whereas clause between the acronym RRTS and the words "to observe", insert the phrase "along the western and eastern nautical highways" and subsequently a six-day land travel to central and north zone. Number two, likewise on the first whereas clause between the word "system" and the conjunction "of", we delete the phrase "along the western and eastern nautical highways". Third, on the second whereas clause, we insert a comma after the word "sorsugon" and the following phrase, "while the inspection team traversed through the provinces of Pampanga, Taralakla Union, Ilocos Sur, Ilocos Norte, Cagayan, Isabela, Nueva Biscaya, Ifugao, Benguet, Pangasinan, and Final Bataan to complete the central and north Luzon inspection." Fourth, on the third whereas clause, after the word "whereas", insert the phrase "during its rest stops". And fifth, we delete the list resolutoric clause, and in lieu thereof, substitute the following, "now therefore be it resolved by the House of Representatives to request the Department of Tourism through Tourism Infrastructure Enterprise Zone Authority or TIESA to allocate funds for the construction and maintenance of public restrooms in all highway systems in the Philippines." And number six, finally amend the title of the resolution to read as follows. Resolution, requesting the Department of Tourism to the Tourism Infrastructure and Enterprise Zone Authority to allocate funds for the construction and maintenance of public restrooms in all highway systems in the Philippines. Madam Speaker, may we know if these committee amendments as proposed are well in order on the part of our sponsor?
Ah, yes, Madam Speaker.
With that, Madam Speaker, I move for the approval, for the approval of the committee amendments as submitted.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. Said amendments are hereby approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 1418.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. House Resolution 1419 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we resume consideration of House Joint Resolution Number 18. And again, please direct our Secretary General to read the title of this House Joint Resolution.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is granted. The Secretary General is so directed.
House Joint Resolution Number 18, Joint Resolution authorizing the increase in base pay of military and uniform personnel in the government and for other purposes.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, the parliamentary status is that we are in the period of sponsorship and debate. And for this, Madam Speaker, I move that we again recognize the distinguished Chairman of the Committee on Appropriations, the Honorable Carlo Nogales.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The Chairman of the Committee on Appropriations is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We're ready to answer any questions.
Madam Speaker, next to interpret is the gentleman from Magdalo, the Honorable Gary Alejano. I move that he be recognized.
The Honorable Gary Alejano from the party's Magdalo is hereby recognized.
Maraming salamat po, ah, Madam Speaker, sa ating mga kasamahan po dito ngayon. And to the Madam Speaker, magandang hapon po. Ah, unang-unang po, nice kung ah, ikongratulate ang ating Chairman ng Appropriation Committee, Honorable ah, ah, Nogales, sa kanyang pagpupunyag i-upang ah, isulong ang pagtaas ng sahod ng ating mga kasundaluhan at kapulisan in all other, ah, uniform, ah, sectors. But before I, ah, ask some questions or clarifications, I would like also to manifest that I support the Joint Resolution Number 8. Um, noong nakaraang Kongreso po, ay nag-file ang, ah, kinatawan ng Magdalo ng ah, ah, Salary Standardization Law 4, at ang, ah, purpose po nito ay maliban sa itaas ang moral ng, ah, ating mga kasundaluhan at, ah, kapulisan, ay gusto nating gawin ito pong anti-corruption measure. Dahil kailangan po natin na itaas significantly ang sahod natatanggap ng ating, ah, mga kawanin ng gobyerno, hindi lamang po sa military and uniform personnel. Ito po ay para sa lahat ng, ah, kawanin ng gobyerno because, ah, it's very hard sometimes for, ah, the government, ah, people to stay focused on their job if they cannot, ah, afford to feed their family at home. So, ah, dahil po sa komplikasyon ng, ah, provision ng, ah, batas, no? Um, PD 1638, na ito ay nagpo-provide na kung saan meron pong indexation provision na pagtumaas po ang base pay ng, ah, military and uniform personnel, ay meron po itong kaakibat na pagtaas sa base pay ng ating mga retiredo or mga bitirano. Subalit, hindi po nagkaroon ng, ah, ah, agreement ang House of Representatives at ang Senado, kaya po hindi naipasa po ang batas. And, ah, to substitute that, ah, ah, proposed bill, ay nagkaroon po ng Executive Order Number 231 upang isulong pa rin ang pagtaas ng, ah, sahod ng kawanin ng gobyerno, subalit, sa bahagi po ng military and uniform personnel, ay maliwanag na nakalagay doon na allowance lamang ang itataas sa kanila. Bakit po allowance lamang? Para hindi ito magkaroon ng effect o matrigger ang provision ng indexation provision ng PD 1638. Ah, so in effect, hindi po nagkaroon ng increase ang ating mga retiredo. In the past, ito na rin po ang, ah, hinaiin ng ating mga retiredo na kung saan ay nagkaroon ng arrears, pension arrears ang gobyerno, ah, or utang ng gobyerno sa ating mga retiredo dahil sa mga nakaraang increases, ay, ah, hindi po pinunduhan 'yung, ah, equivalent na increase sa mga retiredo. Kaya nga nagkakautang ang gobyerno at dandahan po binabayaran, pero hanggang po ngayon, meron pong utang ang gobyerno sa ating mga retiredo. So, ah, um, ngayon po, ay, ah, halos 130,000 na po ang ating mga retiredo. Halos kapantay na ng, ah, aktibo nating mga sundalo. Ito ay sa bahagi lamang ng ating Armed Forces of the Philippines. Sila po ay dahil retiredo, ay talagang, ah, matatanda na po ito. At, ah, nangangailangan po sila, lalong-lalo na, medical attention, 'yung mga pagmenti na ng kanilang kalusugan. At alam po natin pag tumatanda ay marami na pong sakit na lumalabas. And of course, ah, ah, sama po natin ang rising inflation, na kung saan ay tumataas po ang, ah, ang halaga na mga bilihin. So, ah, gusto ko pang iclarify sa ating sponsor, ah, dahil nakalagay po dito, ah, sa Joint Resolution Number 8, specifically providing the suspension of, ah, the indexation provision of, ah, ah, the military or the retirees when it comes to the increase of base pay of the active. Ah, napag-aralan po ba ang itong, ah, mungkahe, ah, in spite of the fact na napakalaki po naging kontrobersyal na provision po ito no'ng nakaraang, ah, increase?
Well, ah, Madam Speaker, um, gusturing ko pong ipaliwanag sa ating kagalang-galang na representative ng Magdalo Partilis na ito nga pong, ah, suspension ng application ng pension indexation, bagamat naandito 'yan sa ating House Joint Resolution Number 18 na pinag-uusapan natin ngayon, eh, pinag-iisipan na rin po ng ating, ah, mga authors, sponsors, ang leadership ng House of Representatives at ng Kongreso, pati na rin ng DBM, kinoconsider na rin po natin itong hinaiin at, ah, itong, ah, panawagan ng ating mga retiredo na bigyan naman natin, ah, pagbigyan naman natin sila dun sa kanilang hinihiling, ah, na dagdag din dun sa pension system. Kaya minabuti natin, ah, Madam Speaker, ah, na itong, ah, suspension ng application ng pen- pension indexation, eh, gagawin nating temporary lamang at para maliwanag po na tayo po'y sincero sa ating, um, gustong gawin, na taasan din 'yung pension ng ating mga retiredo, ah, at the proper moment, ah, Madam Speaker, um, at the proper moment, ah, the Committee on Appropriation, ah, the Committee on Appropriations would be willing to, um, accept an amendment to improve the provision on the pension, ah, indexation. Ah, we are amenable, Madam Speaker, at the proper moment to change the wordings para 'yung application of pen- pension indexation will only be, ah, temporary suspension for a period of about one year. And pending the review of the current pension system of military and uniform personnel by the legislative and executive branches of government, um, pag-aaralan po, ah, kung ano ang pinakamabuting, ah, 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 pension system that will be sustainable and equitable, ah, and gagawa po tayo ng isang pension reform law. Um, so, ah, at the proper moment, we shall be accepting an amendment to the House Joint Resolution that will make the suspension of the pension indexation, ah, temporary for only a period of up to January 1, 2019, or upon the effectiveness of a new pension reform law whichever will come earlier.
Maraming, ah, salamat po sa pagiging bukas ng ating, ah, sponsor. Ah, subalit kaklaruhin ko po ulit, ah, ibig sabihin ho ay, ah, ah, magiging bukas ang sponsor na instead ng dalawang taon, 2018 at 2019, as proposed here in the Joint Resolution, ay pwedeng pong magkaroon ng pagkakataon na ang ating mga retiredo ay masama sa pag-increase sa pangalawang taon, which is January 1, 2019. Ah, tama po ba ang ating pagkaintindi? Tama po ba ang ating pagkaintindi?
Um, 'yung sinasabi po ng ating kagalang-galang na representative ng Magdalo Partilist eh, um, siyempre, kasama po 'yan dito sa ating pagsusuri at pag-aaral ng bagong Pension Reform Law. So, it will be something that we will be considering when we craft the Pension Reform Law. Siyempre, taking into consideration 'yung ating budget, magkano ang kaya nating, maano ang ma-afford natin na pension system. So, in the meantime, Madam Speaker, isu-suspend po natin, but with a guarantee na by January One, 2019, kung wala po tayong Pension Reform Law na maipasa, eh, um, malilift po 'yung suspension ng indexation. Pero 'yung paggawa at pag-craft ng Pension Reform Law, ita-take into consideration po natin lahat ng bagay at kasama na rin po 'yung ang sinasabi ng ating kagalang-galang na representative ng Magdalo Partilist.
Well, naintindihan po natin na lahat naman ay kailangang magkaroon ng pag-aaral. Uh, subalit, alam naman po natin na ang ating mga stakeholders, na ang ating aktibo at mga retireado ay nagtatanong po. Kaya nga, um, mas magandaho kung merong medyo maliwanag na tinitingnan in the future. So, dalawa po, kung magkaroon ng batas upang repormahin ang pension system sa ating military and uniform personnel, at kung wala naman, ay pang-aralan kung masama sila sa January 2019. Uh, so, pag-aaralan palamang kung masasama sila sa 2019. Kasi alam po natin na itong issue ng Pension Reform ay matagal na po itong problema. No, actually, they term this as a ticking time bomb. And hanggang ngayon ho ay hindi pa rin nare resolved. In fact, it is still being deliberated at the committee level. So, um, kung hindi po finally magkaroon po tayo ng Pension Reform Law, ay sakaling mai-konseder o pag-aralan na masama sila sa 2019 by lifting the suspension. And the effect of lifting the suspension would be the retired would be included in the twenty, or be considered to be included in the 2019 portion of this joint resolution, Madam Speaker, Mrs. Sponsor.
Ay, Madam Speaker, basa maliwanag po para makita po ng ating mga retireado, by January One of 2019, magkakaroon po ng reforma sa pension system. Kaya nga po nilalagay natin ito, na it will be this suspension, ang maging wording ng ating magiging amendment, is this suspension shall be automatically lifted on January One, 2019, or upon the effectiveness of a Pension Reform Law, whichever comes earlier. So, maari rin pong maging mas maaga ang makikita nilang effect.
So, pag sinabi po nating automatically lifted at the same time that the second tranche in effect of this joint resolution would be in effect, so, ang sabi ko nga ho, masasama ho sila doon sa, kasi you are lifting eh. You are lifting the suspension. In case that we were not able to pass the needed pension reform, so ibig sabihin, ay automatic siyang malilift by January One, 2019, and therefore, magkaroon ng epekto na masasama na ho sila dahil because nililift po natin ang suspension.
Opo, tama po 'yun.
Salamat po. Uh, para maintindihan po natin ang extent ng consideration, maari ko bang maitanong, uh, if ever na hindi po na-suspend ang itong indexation provision, magkano ho ba ang amount na kailanganin ng ating Gobyerno kung hindi natin isu-suspend itong indexation provision of the PD 1638?
Madam Speaker, for 2018 alone, ang computation po ng DBM eh maari pong umabot tayo ng 38 billion pesos. That is for the indexation provision alone.
If pension will be indexed to the base pay of active personnel, the proposed increase in base pay will have an additional cost of 38.45 billion for the pension of all MUP.
Maraming salamat po. So, malaki po itong ating iko-consideer dahil 38.45 billion, uh, amount needed for, to support the indexation provision. So, um, maitanong ko na rin po, um, nakasama na po pa sa inyong consideration or computation ang kaakibat na pagtaas ng, uh, other pays ng mga MUPs natin, katulad po ng long pay, hazard pay, jump pay, flying pay, and other pays, instructor duty pays. Nakasama na, na, na i-consideer na po ba sa pag-increase nitong January One, 2018, itong mga, uh, pays that are connected to the raise of the base pay?
Um, yes, Madam Speaker. Um, in fact, meron po tayong breakdown dito. Dun sa magiging, in fact, sa breakdown, Madam Speaker, makikita natin dito 'yung, um, increase ng kanyang monthly base pay, 'yung per, P E R A na matatanggap niya, 'yung subsistence allowance, 'yung clothing allowance, laundry allowance, quarters, hazard pay. Tapos, wala na po 'yung provisional allowance and officers allowance. Uh, tapos, ang malaking magiging, makikita nilang pagbabago, 'yung, um, mid-year bonus, no, which is based on base pay, uh, 'yung, um, longevity pay, which is also based on base pay, pati 'yung year-end bonus, which is also based on base pay. And dito rin po sa breakdown, uh, you'll also see the combat duty pay and combat incentive pay para sa mga qualified personnel. So, naka-breakdown po dito lahat.
Maraming salamat po. Sa aking pagkakaintindi, uh, 'yung ibang mga nabanggit, katulad po ng combat pay, combat incentive pay, quarters allowance, ay hindi po 'yan aapektuhan ang pagtaas ng base pay dahil hindi po 'yan naka-percentage doon sa kanilang base pay.
Yes.
Maliban po dun sa long pay, instructor duty pay, sea duty pay, flying pay. Naka-percentage po kasi 'yan sa base pay, so may kaakibat na paglak 'yun.
Yes.
Just like the flying pay, 50% po 'yan ang base pay. So, if we increase, uh, 10,000 more sa base pay, ay magkakaroon ng effect 'yan ng 5,000 increase sa kanya dahil meron ho siyang flying pay bilang isapol, bilang piloto. So, 'yun po 'yung tinatanong ko dahil, um, baka magkautang ho tayo na ini-increase po natin ang base pay, eh 'yung effect naka-connect ho doon sa base pay na pag-increase ay mga iba pang pays
Yes.
ng ating mga sundalo.
Yes. Actually, um, kasama na rin po 'yan sa computation, uh, 'yung makita natin maging effect po nito, 'yung mga, mga, uh, other, uh, pays, no, na, uh, this also dependent or naka-compute based on sa base pay. Uh, gusto ko lang din pong banggitin, Madam Speaker, that, um, actually, 'yung longevity pay is actually tax exempt. Ano po, pati 'yung flying pay, sea duty pay, instructors duty pay, um, ito'y tinatawag na tax exempt collateral allowances din. So, makikita natin, Madam Speaker, na 'yung magiging take-home uh, ng ating mga kasundaluhan at mga kapulisan, 'yung mga military and other uniform personnel, eh, makikita po talaga nila, mararamdaman po talaga nila 'yung, um, karagdagang net take-home pay po nila. Pero huwag po kayong mag-alala, Madam Speaker, sa ating kagalang-galang na representative ng Magdalo Partilist, lahat po ito naconsider po dun sa pag-compute ng kung magkano po ang kinakailangan para ma-implement po ito.
Maraming salamat po at narinig po natin, nakasama po sa computation, 'yung all other pays that are indexed to the raise of the base pay. Uh, maitanong ko lang po, um, Madam Speaker, Madam, uh, Mr. Sponsor, um, kung hindi po matuloy ang joint resolution, o kung wala pong naihain na joint resolution, matutuloy po 'yung third tranche. Ibig sabihin, ay kasama po 'yan sa, uh, 2018 budget. And, um, ito nga, nai-file ang joint resolution, ibig sabihin ho, meron na pong available na budget doon sa 2018 purposely intended for the third tranche of EO 201. And then, maitanong ko lang po kung magkano po ito at magkano rin po ang remaining na amount na kailangang ipuno doon sa pondong intended for third tranche of EO 201. Ito ba ay nanggaling sa, lamang sa MPBF o meron pang pinakukunang, uh, pondo?
Um, Madam Speaker, 'yung sa pagpapatupad ng third tranche ng EO 201, um, nadistribute na po 'yan per agency. So, hindi po sa MPBF 'yung pagpapatupad ng EO 201 dahil 'yan po ay, um, nadistribute na po sa, uh, different agencies. Kasi hindi lang naman military and other uniform personnel ang magkakaroon ng increases sa EO 201. So, sa treatment natin sa budget, kung titignan mo 'yung budget, naka-load na po 'yan sa different agencies, if we're talking about EO 201.
Naintindihan ko po, uh, dahil 'yung ating topic ngayon ay sa MUP, ibig sabihin, 'yung kaakibat na amount doon sa MUP ay binigay na po sa mga ahensya like DND, DILG, at, uh, Namriya, no? So, ibig sabihin, no, 'yung amount ngayon, if you add all the amounts of, uh, uh, money allocated for the MUP, eh meron na po siya talaga for 2018. And on top of that, because kukunin po natin ho 'yan eh. We're going to repeal EO 201 for the purpose of raising the base pay of MUP. Ay, uh, kasi magkaroon doon ng provisional allowance ang ating mga sundalo coming from third tranche. Ngayon po, wala na po 'yan. Isasama na po 'yan sa loob ng Joint Resolution Number Eighteen. So, ang tinatanong ko po, kung walang Joint Resolution Number Eighteen, ay meron na pong amount intended for third tranche of EO 201. Meron na pong budget. I think it's around 60 billion. So, nadistribute sa iba-ibang ahensya, pero 'yun po ay intended for the third tranche of all government officials, employees, including the MUP. And on the part of the MUP, eh kukunin po natin 'yan, hindi natin ipapatupad 'yung EO 201 para sa, sa, uh, MUP. Kundi, kukunin po natin 'yan at maging bahagi ng Joint Resolution Number Eight. Kasi kung ipapatupad po natin pati sa MUP, magdodoble po tayo. So, 'yun ang tinatanong ko po, na ang pondong intended for the third tranche of EO 201 for MUP ay dinagdagan po natin ng additional amount para maging bahagi ng kabuuang Joint Resolution Number Eight po.
Yeah. Uh, klaruhin ko lang, Madam Speaker, um, hindi 'yan parang babawiin mo, tapos dadagdagan mo, tapos ibabalik mo. Uh, kumbaga, ang mangyayari lang, i-o augment mo lang 'yung kulang. Diba? Kasi funds are just funds, you know, pare-pareho lang 'yung funds 'yan eh. So, walang, hindi bawi dagdag lagay, ah, balik. It's just i-o augment lang natin based dun sa computation natin.
Tama po. Uh, hindi ko naman ho sinabing babawiin. Ibig sabihin, dadagdagan mo ho
Yes.
para mabuo
Yes.
ang Joint Resolution Number Eighteen. Ang tinatanong ko po is, uh, magkano pong idadagdag niyo doon sa third tranche? At saan niyo po kukunin ang, uh, pondo?
Uh, actually, I can provide, Madam Speaker, 'yung ating kagalang-galang na representative na Magdalo Partilist, nitong table na'to. So, in this table, you will see kung ano 'yung dapat naging effect sa EO 201, tapos magkano 'yung magiging, um, effect niya with, uh, House Joint Resolution Number Eighteen. No, so, for instance, no, on a monthly basis, 'yung police officer one, taking into account lahat na ng matatanggap niya based on EO 201, uh, he stands to receive 33,031. But with House Joint Resolution Number Eighteen, uh, ito'y magiging 49,116 na. And this is taking into account lahat na, ha? I'm talking here about 'yung pera, 'yung P E R A, 'yung subsistence allowance, clothing allowance, laundry, quarters, hazard pay, mid-year bonus, year-end bonus, at lahat-lahat na. Uh, so, may table po tayo and I can show it to the representative na Magdalo Partilist para ma-compare po niya 'yung, uh, EO 201 versus 'yung uh, naging change with House Joint Resolution Number Eighteen.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Sponsor. Actually, po doon ako papunta sa topic na po 'yan. Ang at, kinaklarify ko lang po is 'yung, uh, hindi 'yung increase or the difference between EO 201, third tranche, and the joint resolution. Ang ibig ko na sabihin po ay, nandito na po sa mga ahensya ang third tranche ng EO 201, kumuha po tayo sa MPBF. Kumuha po tayo sa MPBF upang dagdagan po ito. 'Yun ang ibig ko sabihin po. MPBF ba 'yung source ng additional doon sa fund intended for third tranche of EO 201?
'Yung kakulangan, 'yung kakulangan, 'yung pang augment will be coming from MPBF.
'Yun po 'yung aking tinatanong. Magkano po ang ating kukunin sa MPBF upang idagdag po natin doon sa available na po na fund for 2018, third tranche 201?
64.24 billion.
Magkano po?
64.24 billion for, for 2018.
Ito po 'yung karagdagan mula sa MPBF po?
Basa ito 'yung, yeah, ito 'yung
Kabuwan.
na ilalagay natin sa MPBF to implement House Joint Resolution Number Eighteen.
Kabuwan ay 64.24 billion coming from MPBF?
Opo.
Magkano pong total ng ating, uh, MUP po? For the Joint Resolution Number Eighteen, magkano po 'yung total? Ah, ito.
245.79 billion pesos.
Billion po?
B.
245.75 billion for the total
245.79 B.
For the total amount allocated for Joint Resolution Number, uh, Eighteen. And out of 245.79 billion, 64.24, 24 billion of that will be coming from MPBF?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, Mrs. Sponsor, Madam Speaker. Uh, naitanong ko po 'yan dahil, uh, natural po, hindi po natin maiwasan ang pagdating sa pagkapirahan, kumbaga, ay magkaroon ng comparison. Kung hindi po tayo mag, uh, magpasan ang Joint Resolution Number Eighteen at kung third tranche lamang ang ating pagbabasihan, um, gumawa rin po ako ng maliit na computation. And, uh, I would be happy to have the computation of the committee because actually, I wrote the committee for, uh, someday ka para pupapag-aralan ho nito dahil sabi ko nga kanina, hindi maiwasan na tinatanong ho tayo. At para eksakto po ang maisagot natin sa mga stakeholders po nating nagtatanong. So, um, sinabi ho kanina na magkaroon po ng dublado sa private po lamang. Tama po ba?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
And all the rest ay meron pong pagkakaiba ang, uh, pag-increase.
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Meron bang pagkakataon na magiging negative ang isang rango? Ibig sabihin ho, Ibig sabihin ho, is if you have to compare the third tranche EO 201 in Joint Resolution 18, eh mas mataas pa 'yung EO 201. Meron bang pagkakataon na ganon?
Hindi na po, wala po.
Ah, Madam Speaker, Mrs. Sponsor, hingi po ako ng kopian niyo dahil sa aking pag-aaral, ay, kasi ang tinitingnan ho namin dito ay merong long pay. Mabuti po kung ikaw ay meron na pong fourth and third, fourth, fifth long pay. Pero kung ang long pay mo po ay first long pay palamang, ibig sabihin maliit lamang ito na porcento ng base pay increase. Ang aking nakikita po ay simula po sa cadete, ay merong negative.
Saan po? Cadete, meaning to say candidate soldier?
'Yung provisionary second lieutenant at cadete. If we will take into account all the base pay, the earnings, subsistence allowance, pera, quarters allowance, and all other allowances, plus less, the mandatory deductions, and the taxes that will be withheld, ay magkaroon po ng net gross. And if you have to compare that with the EO 201, third tranche, and with that of Joint Resolution Number 18, ah, kaya na ho, kinaklaro ko dahil sa aking pag-aaral ay merong mga ranggo na magkaroon, ranggo at saka mga certain long pays na magiging negative po. So kaya tinatanong ko kung meron bang pagkakataon na magiging negative ang net gross ng isang sundalo?
Well, based on sa computation po natin, para sa cadete, sa EO 201, kung EO 201 lang aiapply natin, ang magiging effect po ng EO 201 sa cadete would be 54,990. But with House Joint Resolution Number 18, magiging 55,499. So hindi po negative 'yan.
So 34,000 to 55?
54,990, kung EO 201 ang basis natin. But if we, ang basis natin is House Joint Resolution Number 18, ang matatanggap niya is 55,499.
Net gross na po 'yan?
Gross.
Um, well, I have to reconcile my records with yours because masyadong mataas po atang 50-plus thousand para sa isang cadete.
This is cadet, cadet ng DND ng-
Yes po, lahat po ng cadete sa mga academy sa provisionary second lieutenant po.
Sa probationary second lieutenant, sa EO 201, 55,490. But ang sa House Joint Resolution 18, 55,999.
Okay po, maraming salamat po. Definitely, nagkaroon po na nga pagkakaiba 'yung ating computation and I might as well go to my next question. Titignan ko nalang ho mamaya, magingi po ako ng record sa inyo para marreconcile po natin ito para may maliwanat po tayong mairely sa ating mga stakeholders.
Opo.
Dahil po sa aking computation, merong mga negative at maliliit. Tama po ba na sa inyong proposals sa Joint House Resolution, ay front-load po natin ang increase ng ating enlisted personnel as compared that of the officers? Ibig po sabihin, ay nilakihan po natin ang increase ng ating enlisted personnel as compared to the officers. Kasi sa 2018 po na increase ng enlisted personnel ay hindi po nagbago sa 2019. Ganon pa rin po ang kanilang monthly base pay. Simula sa candidate soldier o CS hanggang sa ranggong chief, master sergeant. So wala pong pagbabago ang kanilang base pay. Tama po ba na front-load na natin sa unang taon at hindi na magbabago sa pangalawang taon? Ang officers naman ay hindi masyado nag-increase sa unang taon pero magkakaroon din siya ng significant increase sa pangalawang taon?
Um, I guess for lack of a better term, siguro pwede na rin sa natin sabihin, Madam Speaker, na front-load nga. So there are two ways of looking at it. At least, itong from candidate soldier to first chief master sergeant, tama ba? To chief master sergeant, at least 'yung effect ng kanyang increase sa base pay eh naramdaman niya na agad sa first year. Whereas 'yung mas mataas na ranggo, parang nag-two tranches lang tayo ng kanyang increase. So, it really depends on how you wanna look at it. If you wanna call it front-loading, I guess for lack of a better term to use, you can consider it as quote-unquote "front-loading."
Maraming salamat po, wala naman po niyang negative connotation na aking tanong. Napapansin ko lang ho kasi na walang increase ang pangalawang taon. So ibig sabihin po ay lumaki ng husto sa unang taon, pangalawang taon ay steady lang. Ang ating mga officers ay halos mga maliliit lang ang increase sa unang taon at makakabawi sa pangalawang taon. So proceeding to the next concern, Mr. Sponsor, Madam Speaker. Concern lang po ito, no? At ito po ay ipinarating sa representasyon ng magdalo. Gaya rin po na na-race ng unang nagtanong, ay on concern ng mga ibang sektor, ng civilian employees sa kanilang sweldo. Of course, mahirap din ipaliwanag, lalong-lalo na ito mga civilian employees na sa loob mismo po ng Department of National Defense at Department of Interior and Local Government. Ang example po dito, sinasabi po ng mga professors, bakit daw maliit ang kanilang sweldo sa kanilang tinuturuan ng mga cadete? So parang in a way, it affects their moral because sila po ay, tama po 'yan. Graduate ng masters, they're required to have their PhD and in order for them to teach cadets of Philippine National Police Academy and the Philippine Military Academy. At ito nga, tumaas ang sweldo ng mga cadete. So darating ang punto na mataas ang sweldo ng mga estudyante compared dun sa mga nagtuturo. So I know, Mr. Sponsor, that you've already expressed yourself, sagot niyo po sa unang nagtanong. Ni-race ko lang po ito dahil ito'y concerned din sa mga civilian employees sa loob mismo ng Department of National Defense. Nagtuturo din sa examples, National Defense College of the Philippines, the General Staff Corps. So marami pong mga nagtuturo dyan at mga nagsisilbing mga civilian employees na ang sweldo po nila ay hindi aangat. Kaya nga, 'yun ang concern. So ni-race ko lang po 'yan. Pangalawa, meron po bang pag-aaral ng degree or amount of risk of exposure among the military and uniform personnel? Kasi nga po, I agree na iba po ang exposure ng mga sundalo't pulis. Wala pong, kumbaga, bihiral lamang na buhay mo, nakataya o inaalay sa pagsisilbi sa bayan. So balik sa loob mismo po ng MUP, military and other uniform personnel, meron pong iba't ibang level ng exposure sa risk. So meron po bang pag-aaral dahil pare-pareho silang iniinikan? And katulad po nga sa mga personnel ng Namriya, ano po ang risk na kanilang hinaharap? Katulad po ba sa personnel ng Bureau of Fire and Bureau of Jail Management as compared to a soldier that is assigned in the hinterlands of Basilea? 'Yung ganon po 'yung, meron po bang in a way, pag-aaral as to the amount of risk these personnel are exposed to?
'Yung Namriya naman po, Madam Speaker, wala silang combat pay. Wala silang combat duty pay, wala silang combat incentive pay.
Ganon din po ang mga sundalo na sa headquarters na assign. So, well, naitanong ko lang kung meron ba, kung wala naman, ay at least ito po 'yung magandang usapin sa ibang pagkakataon. So wala po. So lastly, Mr. Sponsor, nagpapasalamat po ako sa mga clarification. I-race ko lang po ang issue ng revolutionary government na nabanggit po kanina. Ang ating Armed Forces, ang ating mga nakatarbaho sa gobyerno, they have sworn to uphold and defend the Constitution. At alam ho natin ay, ang revolutionary government ay wala pong sinasandalan, nalegal na sinasandalan. Kaya po ang ating Armed Forces ay hindi po susuportad 'yan, no? So, tama po, while the Armed Forces, I believe, will not support the revolutionary government, ang pangulo naman kasi po ang nagre-race na maaari siyang mag-declare ng revolutionary government. At meron pong mga prerequisit, ibig sabihin nag-o-open ho siya ng door na pwede, kung, meron pong kung, na magkaroon po ng malawakang pag-atake ng mga Red Fighters sa ating bansa. Sa, ang aking opinion lang po dito, eh noon pa naman ho may malawakang pag-atake ang New People's Army sa ating bansa. So wala, hindi naman ho, at 'yun ay ina-addressed ng ating mga security forces at hindi po dapat ay babagsak sa isang option, revolutionary government. Dahil kung gulo ang ating gustong isolve at ang solusyon ay isang bagay na magkicreate ng another na gulo, at tingin ko po ay mas masahol pa ang gamot doon sa problema ang tinitingnan ho natin. So dahil ang Armed Forces po maharap doon sa issue na 'yan, at lalo na ngayon na naging agresibo ang presidente laban sa New People's Army, it is just but expected na magkaroon po ng pag-aatake ang New People's Army. And I hope that the president would not use that to justification to whatever purpose it may serve him best. So 'yun lang po dahil alam ho natin sa gera, kawawa po ang ating mga sundalo at mga kulataral damage din. Kung sa aking pananaw po, ang mga sundali po ang huli na magsasabi na gusto niya makipaggera. At alam ho natin na sa tagal na po nating attempt na isolve ang problema ng insurgency at saka rebellion, hindi po solusyon ang combat operations. Kaya na ang military ay nag-a-adapt sa ibang kaparaanan like civil-military operations at nag-a-adapt ng mga bagay na winning the hearts and minds of the people because at the end of the day, hindi po solusyon ang barilan at patayan dahil sa isang heightened emotion, kahit ang isang tao ay nasa malinpanig, wala na pong mag-aapil na reason dahil po ay siya ay namatayan, na-biktima, o naging kawawa, nagkaroon ng hinostisia. So 'yun lang po ang gusto kong iemphasize because pag ito ay lalong lumala, maharap naman ho ulit ang ating state security forces sa isang sitwasyon na kung saan ay magkakaroon ng malawakang combat operations at hindi po natin maiiwasan ang mga bagay katulad po ng nangyari sa Marawi. Hindi mo talaga maiiwasan na merong mamatay at masirang mga installations. So with that, Madam Speaker, Mrs. Sponsor, ako po'y nagpapasalamat at meron po tayong initiative upang pataasin ang moral ng ating mga sundalo't pulis. And I hope that the purpose is really to help them, not to buy their loyalties. Dahil ang loyalty po ng ating Armed Forces at saka ng ating kapulisan ay nasa Constitution. Wala po niisang loyalty kahit kanino pa kundi sa ating Constitution. And I would like to congratulate the sponsor, Honorable Nogales, for this notable effort. Maraming salamat po.
Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, next to interpolate is the distinguished gentleman from the First District of Camarines Sur. Our Honorable Deputy Speaker, Rolando Andaya Jr., I move that the gentleman be recognized, Madam Speaker.
The Honorable Deputy Speaker Rolando Andaya is hereby recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Would the Honorable Chairman yield to a few questions?
Yes, Madam Speaker, it would be an honor.
Thank you very much. First of all, let me say I'm full support of this joint resolution. And I would just like to commensurate with the Chairman on the challenges of having to pass which a seemingly simple joint resolution to increase the salary of uniform personnel in reality could be a challenge. I've been listening to the interpolations and you can see the different opinions of the various members of this house. I've had the chance to enjoy the situation the Chairman is enjoying right now. I remember a time in which the national government passed a bill increasing the salaries to assert, giving additional allowance to government employees. I thought it would be easy to pass but only to find out that half of the bureaucracy was against it. For one simple reason, they were saying that an allowance is not part of the computation of your pension or your retirement. Say they would rather have a salary increase rather than allowance. The next year, the same Congress passed the law, SSL 3, granting additional salary. Now the other half is complaining, "Bakit daw ginawang sweldo?" Dahil taxa walang sweldo. "Dapat daw ginawang allowance para tax-free." So it really have, wala ho mapupuntahan talaga eh. But that is not the point of my rising today. The point is, what I'm trying to raise, Madam Speaker, is that we tend to forget, when we talk about salaries, we wish that we could all give an increase in salary every year, but that is not the situation. We tend to forget the sources of these salary increases. Just to take us down memory lane, when the new constitution was drafted, it sets forth a salary system which is standardized. Meaning to say, all those doing the same job have the same salary grade. So magkapareho ang sweldo, to make it simple, a teacher one would basically have the same salary as a police officer one, basically the same salary as a private first class one. That is basic rule on the salary increases. During the time of President Coria Aquino, we had salary standardization one, which standardized all salaries. During the time of FDR, we had salary standardization two. But let us remember first, how was FDR able to give salary standardization two? Meaning to say, all government employees got an increase in salary. How was he able to do it? Maybe you'll have short memories. I took a look. He was able to do it because he was able to pass the VAC. Now comes the time of President Erap. A new law was passed which gave an increase in salary for the policemen only, which did not include other uniform personnel. Meaning to say, pulis lang ang tumasang sweldo, hindi kasama 'yung Bureau of Fire, hindi kasama Bureau of Jail Management, hindi kasama 'yung Coast Guard, hindi rin kasama 'yung Namriya, pulis lang. It actually took, while in a sense you could say that was a distortion of salary standardization, but at that point in time, the finances of the national government could not handle an increase of all government employees. You have to remember during the time of President Erap, we were in the middle of the Asian financial crisis. So isang sektor lang ang nauna at kailangan humabulho ng lahat ng sektor. And for the information of everyone, it took the national government eight years para ho maisapantay ulit o maisstandardize naman lahat ang salaries. Salary grade ng pareho sweldo ulit, ang PO1, private first class one, pati ho 'yung teacher. Nine years, it took nine years. And what did it- And what did it take for the administration of GMA to be able to do that salary standardization three? Again, it took another round of increases in VAT. VAT was increased to 12%. Without that, there would have been no SSL 3. Now again, we're in the same situation. May naunang sektor ulit, which is normal, happened already. Hindi naman talaga kaya sabay-sabay lahat, nauna ho ngayon ang MUP. But ang magandang sitwasyon na 'to, habang ini-increase 'yung MOP, the rest of the national government are still to receive two tranches of increases for SSL 4, which was passed by former president, during the time of former president Noi Noi Aquino. So, we're even, we're even a better situation than that the time when the, only the policemen receive a salary increase. Ibig sabihin lang ho nito, for other government officials not part of the MUP, look at it from the point of view na nauna na 'yung pulis, meaning to say, MUP rather, meaning to say, salary standardization five is already in the offing. Because nauna ho 'yung isang sektor, after two years, you can expect salary standardization five to be in the works. But with one caveat, like all of the other salary increases, there needs to be an increase in the collection of our national government. And I'm talking about the train. So, those who are asking for more, those who feel left out, they should be the first ones to support the train which is about to be put before the plenary. Thank you very much. And would you agree with me, Mr. Chairman, baka sabi mo di kitatanong, would you agree with me in my statement?
I agree 100%, madam speaker, with the statements made by the honorable deputy speaker Andaya.
Thank you very much, madam speaker, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Majority Leader.
Madam speaker, I move that we recognize the honorable Franz Castro from the ACT teachers as the next interpreter.
The honorable Castro is recognized for her interpolation.
Thank you very much, madam speaker. Ah, 'yung ating po bang sponsor ay willing na tumanggap ng mga some questions mula sa representasyong ito.
Opo, madam speaker.
Um, thank you dun sa pagibigay ng history ni Congressman Andaya, oh, kung paano tumaas ang sweldo ng ating mga personnel. So, nakita natin, um, 'yung pagtaas po ng sweldo depende po doon sa tinataas din nung mga taxes natin na kinukuha natin sa mga, ah, sa ating mga mamamayan. Siguro pa magfocus ako muna dun sa, dahil kanina pa sinasabi ng ating kagalang-galang na sponsor na merong, um, pag-aaral tungkol doon sa, um, pagpapataas ng sweldo ng mga military and uniform personnel. Hindi naman po tayo tutol na taasan ang sweldo ng ating mga military and uniform personnel. In fact, marami po, may mga teachers po tayo na ang mga kabiak ay mga, ah, pulis at mga military. At malamang matutuwad din sila sa ganito. So, pero ako po bilang, on the perspective po ng dati po, ang dati po akong guro, na nagsimula po ang sweldo ko nung 1987, ang 3102, hanggang sa umabot po ito, doon sa, after 25 years, inabot ko po 'yung kategori o level ng master teacher two. Pero malaki po ang, ang, ibig sabihin 'yung binuno, and binubuno na anang mga guro para po mapataas ang sweldo, mapromote. At, at siyempre, 'yung mga pag-aaral na ginagawa po ng ating mga guro, professional development na ginagawa po ng ating mga guro. Ang trabaho po ng isang guro, um, madam speaker, Mr. Sponsor, ay hindi naman po na iba doon sa trabaho po ng ating mga kasundaluhan at ang ating mga kapulisan, niriskin po namin, niriskin ang guro ang kanyang buhay. Alam niyo po ngayon, ah, mas risky na po ang maging guro sa ngayon, madam speaker, ah, Mr. Sponsor. Dahil unang-una sa kondisyon sa paggawa, o, ah, 'yung kondisyon sa mga classrooms. Hindi, um, huwag na po nating tingnan 'yung mga city, 'yung mga, mga nakalagay, naka-assigned sa mga kalunsuran. Mas marami pong mga guro ang naka-assigned sa mga liblib na lugar. At, at ang kanila pong sinusong nahirap pagpunta lang po sa mga lugar ng eskwelahan ay talagang araw-araw na nasa risk ang mga guro. Kaya kung ikukumpara po natin sa risk, ay talagang ang buhay po rin ng mga guro ay talagang risky din sa araw-araw na, na buhay. So, kung, kung pagbabatayan po natin ang risk, ay talagang halos kapantay lang po. Sa moral, pagdating naman po doon sa moral, um, ngayon po ang moral ng ating mga kaburuan ay napakababa. Dahil po ngayon po, ikukumpara po natin ang sweldo ng mga guro, madam speaker and Mr. Sponsor, na 19,692, 'yung teacher one natin, na kung tutuusin napakalayo po nito doon sa tinatawag nating, ah, standard of living, o 'yung ating, o 'yung tinatawag natin na poverty line. Malapit na po ito sa poverty line. Kung pagbabatayan po natin 'yung standard na sinasabi ng ating gobyerno na kailangan po ng at least 1,099 per day ang sweldo ng pamilya na may apat na, ah, na anak para lang po makaagapay doon sa mga pang-araw-araw na mga pangangailangan sa ating, sa buhay. So, ito po 'yung kalagayan. Isa pa pong kalagayan ng mga guro ay uung, kailangan nilang, dahil ko lang ang sweldo, kailangan ng mangutang. Marami pong mga guro ngayon, nakasangla 'yung mga ATM nila. Marami pong mga guro ngayon, titignan niyo ilang porsyento lang, 'yung matatawag na wala talagang utang sa, sa, sa mga bangko, sa mga ahensya na gobyerno, at iba pa. Isa pa pong kalagayan, ah, kung ikukumpara po natin sa ating mga military and uniform personnel, with your respect po, 'yung kanila pong mga pangangailangan, lalong-lalo na po sa kanilang, ah, pangangailangan sa trabaho, ay provided po ito ng ating gobyerno. Samantalang ang mga teachers, binibili po nila 'yung sarili nilang mga gamit. Teachers lang yata 'yung bumibili. Among government employees, ang bumibili po ng supplies ay mga teachers. So, ito po 'yung kalagayan ng ating mga kaburuan. Kaya po matagal na po na hinihiling na mga guro. Panahon pa ito ng ating, ng nakaraang administrasyon, after six years, nagbigay ng kakarampot na pagtaas ng sweldo, at umaasa po ang mga guro na sa, na sa administrasyong duterte ay mabibigyan ng prioridad. Pero nakita natin, madam speaker, ginoong sponsor, na iba pala, iba 'yung prioridad. Or kumbaga po sa anak, o kumbaga po sa tatay at magulang, meron pong kinikilingan ang administrasyon. So, kumbaga po sa magulang, sa mga anak, meron pong isang anak na pinapaboran, samantalang 'yung iba ay hindi, o sasabihin na lang mamayana, o sasabihin na lang, pag-aaralan pa kung ibibigay 'yung kahilingan ng mga anak. Parang nakakademoralize po ito sa bahagi po ng mga partikular, sa mga kaburuan, na nag-antay din kami ng matagal na pag-aaral ng DBM. Madam speaker and, at ginoong sponsor, kung kailan itataas ang sweldo. Pero nagtaas nga, nakakarampot naman. At ito na sana 'yung pagkakataon na nakakakita sana ng pagbabago, tunay na pagbabago, pero isa't ka lahat 'yung taon ng administrasyon, wala pa rin nakikitang pagbabago ang ating mga kaburuan. Kaya po, ang representasyong ito, ah, madam speaker, ay talaga pong, um, nagpapahayag ng tunay na sentimiento po ng sektor ng mga guro sa pangyayaring ito. Ah, ang una pong tanong, um, Mr. Sponsor, so, dito po sa Joint Resolution Number 18, maari po ba ninyong, um, sabi, um, sabihin dito kung ano po 'yung magiging epekto po ng, ng Joint Resolution Number 18, dun po sa magiging retirement by next year ng ating mga kasundaluhan? So, ito rin po ba 'yung magiging basihan dun sa retirement benefit? At magkano po 'yung magiging budget natin dito?
Ah, gaya po ng sinabi ko, at nasagot ko po kanina nung tinanong nung kagalang-galang na representante ng Magdalaw Party List, um, sa tamang, ah, panahon at the proper moment, pag nag-move na po nung amendments, sa period of amendments, willing po kaming amendahan 'yung House Joint Resolution Number 18 para po may pasok 'yung napag-isipan na po namin na itong suspension na pension indexation eh, temporarily suspended lang po, ah, and will be lifted by January 1, 2019, or when a new pension law will be passed, whichever will be earlier, madam speaker.
Thank you, ah, Mr. Sponsor. Madam speaker, dito po sa tranch 1 and tranch 2 nung ating Resolution Number 18, so napasin po natin dito na mula doon sa, ah, cadet, ah, mula dun po sa probationary second lieutenant, ah, on the second tranch po ay tumaas, samantalang uumpung nasa rank and file, mula po doon sa candidate soldier, hanggang dito po sa, sa, sa cadet ay halos pare, ah, parehas lang po. So, ano po ba 'yung naging konserasyon sa pagta, kasi ganito rin po 'yung naging, ay kasi po ang SSL, ang SSL po, pagtumaas po 'yung mula salary grade 1 hanggang 33, lahat po 'yun tumataas. Pero ano po ba 'yung naging konserasyon ng DBM through our sponsor? Yung, ano po ba 'yung naging malaking konserasyon? Bakit po naging ganito? Hindi po ba parang may distortion o parang may discrimination sa ganitong, ah, salary scale?
Um, 'yung budget din po ang naging konserasyon nito. So, parang ang nangyari, um, kung gusto mong isipin, 'yung mga rank and file, ah, well, quote-unquote, rank and file, 'yung itong mga lower ranks, kumbaga nauna na pong na-implement 'yung change ng kanilang, ah, 'yung kanilang increase, ah, one tranch lang po. Kumbaga, gaya nga ng sinabi ni, ah, ng ating kagalang-galang na representative na Magdalaw Party List, for lack of a better term, kumbaga parang na-front load na po. Yung kabuu, kabuuang epekto nung salary base, base salary increase po, nito mga nasa lower rank. Whereas 'yung sa higher rank, ginawa pong parang two tranches. So, one of the consideration siyempre is magkano 'yung kayang ma-sustain nung budget natin. Gawa ng, ito'y, um, base po sa, ah, 2018 budget, at magkano 'yung pwede nating, ah, i-allocate na budget para po sa implementation nito. So, everything, madam speaker boils down to really budget.
Thank you, ah, Mr. Sponsor. Also, nakikita po natin 'yung impact. Ito lang nga po eh, 'yung discrimination dito sa tranch 1 and 2, discrimination on the lower lang, ranks, and the upper rank ng military and uniform personnel. Nakikita natin 'yung impact doon sa ating budget. Pero, ah, hindi natin yata nakita, Mr. Sponsor, 'yung impact sa kabuuang naman ng buong budget na ito doon sa, impact nito doon sa ating kabuuang budget. Anyway, ah, ito po bang ano, aside po doon sa sinasabing pagpataas ng moral ng ating mga military and uniform personnel, kaya nga tinataas 'yung sweldo na doble. Kaya si binanggit kanina na unprecedented, talagang hindi mat, hindi ma, walang, walang kapantay itong klase ng pagtaas na ito sa isang sektor ng ating, um, birokrasya. So, Mr. Sponsor, matanong ko lang po sa inyong study, napag-aralan po ba dito, halimbawa, uung, um, pagfactor nung Consumer Price Index, 'yung mga inflation, at iba pa ang mga consideration? Kasi madalas, at 'yung dami, kasi madalas ko tong naririnig doon sa ating DBM na kapag kami po inaykipag-dialog sa DBM, maraming mga sinasabing mga konserasyon sa kanilang pag-aaral. Pero kanina, ma, ma, sa pagpapakinig ko po doon sa inyong pag-rise out tungkol doon sa pag-aaral ninyo kung bakit ganito, ah, kataas ang binibigay nating sweldo, o taas ng sweldo sa ating mga military and uniform personnel. Meron pa po bang iba pang mga batayan bukod sa sinasabi nating pagpapataas ng moral, very risky, ah, wala itong counterpart na private sektor, at iba pa? Kasi para pong, hindi ko po rin kasi maintindihan 'yung mga ganong rason dahil, ah, ako po ay, um, sa salary standardization lopo na, na inaano po ng DBM, marami po silang mga kinakatwiran na mga pag-aaral tungkol doon sa mga economic impact and everything. So, ano po pa po ba 'yung mga ipapagbatayan? Bukod po sa priority, priority rin siguro ito na ating presidente?
Um, I cannot, hindi ko masagot categorically. Ah, maari po sigurong na kasama rin 'yung ibang factors, economic factors. Kasi siyempre, titignan mo rin 'yung, um, kalagayan ng ating mga kasundaluhan, mga kapulisan, 'yung, ah, way of living nila, at, ah, siguro, all of these things come into play kasama 'yan indirectly sa mga factors na, ah, napag-isipan doon sa pagbigay ng dagdag, karagdagang sweldo.
Um, thank you po. Sana po mas maipaliwanag pa 'to ng maayos, ano, para mas maintindihan po ito ng mas nakararaming, ah, mga, um, especially 'yung mga civilian personnel natin, kung bakit naging ganito. Ah, kabilis, kataas ang increase natin doon sa MUP. Kasi po, kung tumataas po ang mga bilihin, kung tumataas 'yung ating mga, ah, serbisyo, hindi lang po mga military and uniform personnel ang nakakaramdam nito. Mas nararamdaman, danaramdaman din po ito ng mga civilian personnel at ng mga mamamayan natin. Kaya po, kung ito po 'yung naging katwiran dati doon sa, kung marami pong mga economic factors dati na kinakatwiran ng DBM, kaugnay noong rationale sa pagpapataas ng sweldo. So, parang, ano, ah, parang hindi ko po nakikita 'yung talagang, ah, tunay na, na rason bukod po doon sa mga nabanggit. Ah, napasasabi niyo po, Mr. Sponsor, na pag-aaralan natin after 2019, dahil wala na tayo rin dito sa kongreso. After 2019, na matapos na 'yung Executive Order 201, pag-aaralan na, o ngayon, pinag-aaralan na natin 'yung salary increase siguro ng ating mga civilian personnel. Partikular po, Mr. Sponsor, as the chair of the appropriation committee, um, ay siguro may tanong na lang sa DBM, hanggang kailan po 'yung pag-aaral na ito na naman ahaantayin po ng ating mga iba pang mga civilian personnel, 'yung pag-aaral na gagawin ng DBM?
Um, madam speaker, siguro malaking factor din 'yung, ah, titignan mo 'yung magiging revenue increases natin, 'yung karagdagang revenues ng, ah, mako kolekta ng gobyerno, gaya ng sinabi nung, ah, ah, gaya ng sinabi ng ating kagalang-galang ng deputy speaker na mula sa Talawigan ng Camarines Sur. Um, um, siyempre, titignan mo 'yung, magkano 'yung mga revenues na naggyo-gyogenerate ng ating, um, gobyerno, at, ah, titignan mo 'yung mga new revenue sources, ah, kung saan pwedeng manggagaling 'yung, ah, ah, magiging, ah, pagkukunan ng karagdagang sweldo. Kaya nga po, ngayon, sa kasalukuyan, pinag-usapan na sa Bi-Cameral Conference Committee 'yung tax reform. So, pagpumasarin po 'yung tax reform, titignan rin natin, ah, realistically, pag ito'y, halimbawa, na-implement na ng 2018, doon mo talagang makikita, um, kung magkano 'yung magiging collections niya. Siyempre, meron tayong projections based doon sa House version natin. Siyempre, meron tayong projections based dun sa House version natin. Ahm, so makikita natin 'yan, ah, magkakaroon ng projections sa magiging final version na pipirmahan ng ating pangulo. Pag nagkasundo po sa BiCam. And then matetest mo na rin po 'yan sa two thousand eighteen, kung magkano pa talaga 'yung nagja-generate na additional revenues ng tax reform. So, kasama rin 'yan sa pag-aaral, no? Kung may karagdagang revenues na kukuha dito sa mga bagong batas, bagong ah, itong tax reform. Ahm, kasama rin 'yan sa magiging factor sa pag-aaral at pagsusuri. Kung magkano 'yung pwedeng maging dagdag na sweldo or karagdagang ah, ito nga, salary increase para sa mga, sa civilian personnel. Ah, by twenty nineteen or twenty twenty. So siyempre, kasama dyan 'yung mga computation mo na ma-projected increases as the years go on. So, very technical po 'yung maging pag-aaral at pagsusuri po nitong lahat.
Ahm, salamat po dun sa pagpapaliwanag. So napansin ko lang po, kapag civilian personnel, parang napaka-technical at marami pang pag-aaralan. Pero kapag MUP based lang dun sa moral at dun sa risk, 'yung ating naging batayan. Mukha, mukhang naging batayan. Ah, for the record lang po, mister, ah, madam speaker, mister sponsor. June thirty ba po, June thirty, twenty sixteen po nakahain 'yung House Bill Number Fifty-Six. Ito po 'yung panukalang batas ng Act Teachers' Party List para po mapataasan. O, o mailagay po din sa tamang puesto ang sweldo ng ating mga guro, magiisang taon na. Ah, sana po, ah, bago matapos ang ating termino, ay mapag-usapan na ito. Siguro hindi lang naman House Bill Number Fifty-Six, meron ding more than twenty na siguro na mga ah, panukalang batas para sa salary increase. Hindi lang po ng mga teachers, maging 'yung ating mga iba pang mga employee, ah, civilian personnel. So, mister sponsor, madam speaker, so makakaasa po ba ang representasyong ito na bagong matapos siguro 'yung ating term? Ay mapag-usapan man lang sa Committee on Appropriation. Itong mga panukalang batas o mapag-aralan man lang sa Committee on Appropriation itong mga ano na to? Na may kaugnayan, na pwede rin po siguro nating maisama dun sa ginagawang study po, para dun sa salary increase.
Ah, opo, madam speaker, kasi ahm, siyempre medyo nauna po ito. Ah, pero hinihintay rin po natin 'yung advice ng DBM. 'Yung kanilang, ah, itong mga panukalang batas na pending ngayon sa Committee on Appropriations. Eh, na-refer na po namin sa DBM for their position paper. At ah, ang gusto ko rin po kasing ipag-sabay-sabay na itong lahat ah, sa isang ah, hearing. Para wala pong maiiwanan. Pero kailangan, meron din po kasi tayong pakikipag-ugnayan sa DBM. So, ah, madam speaker, I beg the indulgence of the ahm, ah, representative from Act Teachers' Party List. Na ahm, allow me the chance to ahm, confer and ah, coordinate this with DBM. Because gusto ko naman po na pagdating dun sa hearing nito sa committee. Ah, meron naman pong ah, magandang ahm, ah, mangyayari or ah, ah, progress and development dito sa pagiging hearings po natin. So, right now, hinihintay ko lang po 'yung coordination with DBM. But we're, right now, we're very, masyadong, 'yung BiCam, 'yung budget pa po 'yung priority ngayon eh. But siguro, next year, pag hindi na budget season, maaring gumalaw na 'yung mga ito.
Thank you, mister sponsor. Ahm, ah, panghuli na lang po, madam speaker, na sana po ah, mapadali na rin po 'yung pag-aaral tungkol dun sa pagpapataas ng sweldo po ng lahat ng civilian personnel. At siyempre po ito, ang paninindigan po ng representasyong ito na sana, nobody will be left behind dito sa pagtaas ng sweldo. Dahil alam naman po natin na pantay-pantay lang naman ang nagiging sitwasyon in terms of the economic ah, na sitwasyon na dinadanas po ng ating mga mamamayan. Thank you, madam speaker. Thank you, mister sponsor.
Maraming salamat, madam speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam speaker, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. The period of sponsorship and debate of House Joint Resolution Number Eighteen is hereby closed.
Madam speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. The period of amendments for House Joint Resolution Number Eighteen is hereby opened.
Madam speaker, this is to propose individual amendments. The first, on page one, paragraph four, the last line after the acronym MUP. Change the punctuation mark period with the punctuation mark comma and add the phrase as follows, followed by the punctuation mark colon. Madam speaker, may we know if this is acceptable to the sponsor?
We accept, madam speaker.
With that, madam speaker, I move for the approval of the aforementioned amendment.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved, the amendment is hereby approved.
Second, on the same page, paragraphs five and six, delete the whole provisions. May we know, madam speaker, if this is acceptable to the sponsor?
We accept, madam speaker.
With that, madam speaker, I move for the approval of the said amendment.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the amendment is approved.
Third, on page two, section two between the ranks cadet and ensign under the column PCG. Insert the rank probationary ensign. May know, madam speaker, if this is acceptable to the sponsor?
We accept, madam speaker.
With that, madam speaker, I move for the approval of the amendment as aforementioned stated.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the amendment is approved.
Fourth, on page three, same section between the ranks cadet and ensign under the column PCG. Insert the rank probationary ensign. May we know if this is acceptable to the sponsor, madam speaker?
We accept, madam speaker.
With that, I move for the approval of the said amendment.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the amendment is approved.
On the same page, the last paragraph, first line after modified schedule before the word pending. We insert the section title which reads, Roman numeral three, suspension of indexation of pension to base pay. And renumber succeeding sections accordingly. May we know if this is acceptable to the sponsor, madam speaker?
We accept, madam speaker.
With that, I move for the approval of the said amendment.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the amendment is approved.
On page four, lines one to four, delete the last sentence starting from the article the up to the number eight-five-five-one. And in lieu thereof, substitute the following. The indexation of such pension shall thus remain to be based on the rates of base pay scheduled provided under GR number four. Notwithstanding the provisions of Presidential Decree Number Sixteen Thirty-Eight, Series of Nineteen Seventy-Nine as amended. Republic Act Number Eight-Five-Five-One, Republic Act Number Five-Nine-Seven-Six, Republic Act Number Nine-Nine-Nine-Three, and Republic Act Number Nine-Two-Six-Three. This suspension shall be automatically lifted on January one, two thousand and nineteen. Or upon the effectivity of a pension reform law, whichever comes earlier. May we know if this is acceptable to the sponsor, madam speaker?
We accept, madam speaker.
With that, I move for the approval of the said amendment.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the amendment is approved.
On the same page, between sections, Roman numeral eight, on separability and the word adopted. Insert the following resolutoric clause. Resolve further that the modification of the base pay of the MUP shall be aligned with the objective of maintaining fiscal integrity and pursuing pension reform. Resolve furthermore that the amendment of existing laws and issuances contrary to the provisions hereof shall be effective upon approval of this joint resolution. And resolve finally that this joint resolution shall take effect on January one, two thousand and eighteen. May we know, madam speaker, if this is acceptable to the sponsor?
We accept, madam speaker.
With that, madam speaker, I move that for the approval of the said amendment.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the amendment is approved.
Madam speaker, I move to close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Majority Leader.
Yes, may we know, it's the pleasure of the gentleman, madam speaker.
Ah, I would like to propose some individual amendments. If I may be allowed.
May we hear it, madam speaker?
Majority Leader, yes?
Madam speaker, may I proceed?
The gentleman may proceed.
Thank you, madam speaker. Madam speaker, as an individual amendment, ah, and taking into consideration the earlier, ah, as elicited earlier in my interpolation. That ah, ah, sixty-four point two billion pesos is already available in the, in the proposed twenty eighteen budget. And taking into consideration the ah, the justified demand of all government employees for a substantial salary increase. I propose the following amendment. Ah, madam speaker, ah, would the sponsor be amenable ah, to the following? One, to set aside or delete sections one and two of ah, House Joint Resolution Number Eighteen. And instead, include the following provision. Ah, which will allow for coverage of all government employees. Ah, civilian as well as ah, uniform personnel. And provide for the full implementation of ah, joint of ah, Executive Order Two-O-One. As of starting in January one, twenty eighteen. No?
Madam speaker, move for suspension.
And?
Session suspended. Pero wala ka namang itin. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam speaker, may we hear again from the Honorable Tinio on his amendments?
Thank you, madam speaker. So let me reiterate, my, my proposed amendment is to set aside or delete ah, sections one and two of House Joint Resolution Number Eight. That would be coverage and the modified base pay schedule. In its place, a new provision, ah, which ah, specifically ah, covers the salary increase for all. Ah, all ah, employees of government, civilian as well as uniform personnel. And that this will, ah, that, that the joint resolution will provide for full implementation of ah, the salary schedules in Executive Order Two-Zero-One. And that ah, further, an additional amount of, apart from that, an additional amount of at least two thousand pesos per month increase. Will be given to the rank and file employees. Ah, that is my proposal, madam speaker.
May we know, madam speaker, if the same is acceptable to the sponsor?
Ah, madam speaker, I am constrained to reject the proposal because wala naman tayong pag-aaral kung anong magiging net effect niyan in total. And um, this is just ah, a sudden suggestion without any computations.
I could show the computations to the ah...
Anyway, madam speaker, I am constrained to reject the proposal.
Does the gentleman insist on his amendment?
Ah, yes, I would like it to be put to a vote.
Anyway, madam speaker, ah, in any event, as the Honorable Andias said, with the advancement of one sector. Ah, it is inevitable that we will have the fifth salary standardization law ah, in the offing. So I think the concerns of the Honorable Tinio will be accommodated in another, in another law that will be adjusting salaries very soon, madam speaker. So we beg the indulgence of the Honorable Tinio, madam speaker, that ah, that we forego ah, with this ah, individual amendment in, in the meantime.
Well, madam speaker, it's on the record that I made a concrete proposal and it was rejected by the sponsors or, so I will leave it at that, madam speaker.
We are very thankful to the Honorable Tinio, madam speaker.
Thank you, madam speaker.
Majority Leader.
Ah, with that, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the period of amendments for House Joint Resolution Number Eighteen is hereby closed.
Madam speaker, I move that we approve House Joint Resolution Number Eighteen as amend, on second reading as amended.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. All those in favor of the approval of House Joint Resolution Number Eighteen as amendment, say aye. Those against, say nay. The ayes have it. Um, House Joint Resolution Number Eighteen is approved on second reading.
Madam speaker, in accordance with our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation. I move that we refer the following House resolutions to the appropriate committee. House Resolution, Resolution Fourteen-Sixty to the Committee on Ways and Means. House Resolution Fourteen-Sixty-Four to the Committee on Housing and Urban Development. House Resolution Fourteen-Sixty-Eight to the Committee on Dangerous Drugs. House Resolution Fourteen-Seventy-Four to the Committees on Ways and Means and Appropriations. House Resolution Fourteen-Eighty to the Committee on Public Works and Highways. House Resolution Fourteen-Eighty-One to the Committee on Public Order and Safety. House Resolution Fourteen-Eighty-Five to the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs. I so move, madam speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion for referrals is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Madam speaker, I move that we adjourn session until December eleven, four o'clock in the afternoon.
Hearing none, the session is adjourned until December eleven.